Yeah, I agree with that.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Thanks for coming out tonight. Recall this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one ancient, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Phil Jackson.
Heavenly Father, we ask you to be with us this evening as we go over the matters facing the citizens of St. Agnes. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Please take your oath.
Member Ier, here. Mayor Phil Jackson.
Here.
Mayor Alon.
Here.
Member Living.
Member Elter.
Here.
Member Shepherd.
Here.
Member Willard.
Here.
Any additions to the agenda, staff or council?
I had two committee meetings I went to, and county planning committee.
Okay, that's, you can do that in the committee reports. Okay, first up is public hearing, environmental ordinance, grass length. Any motion in a second to go into the public hearing?
I'm motioning to go in.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Anyone here in the audience? Any comments? What we're doing is changing ordinance from it's twelve inches now down to eight. Betsy?
Mayor, I have no objections to the grass length being taken as many inches. That's fine. In that same area, there are some things that are being, in the same, some of which we know, which as we know now, that we have known then, is the only plan that supports to protect the monarch butterfly. So if you are in the containers, I would recommend that you also knew, know the name of that list of these plants. There are other native plants on that list that aren't a big problem, and you could take that off too, but I think nobody missed a very important one. You may also want to add to the list of banned plants that there is a wild person that knows throw around the city. It's another one of those ones that causes contact in places to allergic people. So I would say that one and place an ivy and place an oak are perfectly okay to ban. The others, I don't know why we would bother because I don't think we really endorse that kind of stuff in that place. So the other plants, I think, certainly.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else here in the public? Ma'am?
I have a question about, specifically, you know, mow in May. They promote that no mowing May for the bubblebeets and honeybees to pollinate. So it's, environmentalists are really big about that. Is that going to be an exception maybe for May? Or, you know, just kind of consider that maybe because I know I've seen some signs in areas to say no mowing in May.
We did have this come up last year, and I think we were giving people a bit of leeway. What they don't want you to do is take your Danny line down.
We're not talking like letting somebody get it.
That might be my favorite slogan in the middle of May.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else here have a comment about grass length? Cronin?
I would agree with the, with the lady there. If it made, if somebody let the, must made the grass might be eight inches, you know, if you didn't. But you should add that option if that's how you feel environmentally that you're helping out. If we let the grass grow, that's what I'm explaining. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Okay.
Hearing no further comment, I move we close the public hearing.
Have a motion?
Yes, hold on a second.
Second, to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, up next, public hearing on parking ordinance. I need a motion, second, to go into a public hearing on parking ordinance.
I'll make the motion.
Well, second.
Have a motion in a second? Any discussion? All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Anyone here in the public? Any comments about the parking ordinance?
I'm looking, do you have a copy of orders? Which parking are we talking?
Yes, tell us.
Go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, you got it. In regards to the parking ordinance, we were looking at, right now, the current language is list parking enforcement from seven AM to seven PM. We're looking at eight AM to eight PM. And currently, it's Monday through Saturday. We're looking to include Sunday. And, and there's some language for the parking bureau. We'd like to change that to the municipal violations bureau, which is either way, it's just a simple way of, of saying the clerks. That's where they go to make a payment. That's all that is. All they're doing is accepting payment. To get rid of the language about the coin meters, the parking meters, take out the fee structure and just have it instead of specifying the, the, the fee rates. It would say refer to the fee schedule. So that way, as, as the fee schedule gets updated annually, you're not updating the ordinance. It's just language that refers you to the fee schedule. And then the permits would be year round instead of seasonal. And then the parking meter authority would be removed from the city engineer's office to the city manager's office. And that is it.
Right, Betsy?
I think I want to understand, are you talking about parking downtown on the streets, parking in city parking lots, parking at the marina, getting milked there by that or the, you can do?
I think it's all, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's all public parking areas. Marina, behind the businesses, front of the businesses. Yes, yeah, we'll be getting new signage.
Yep.
And is there any restriction on overnight parking on residential streets?
Right now, there is only from, what is it, November to April.
That's something we're.
That's for plowing, but they're looking into it. But right now, that's the only restriction on side streets is during those months because of snow plowing.
We, we realize that there's going to be potential for, uh, visitors to start parking on the side streets, and that's one of the things we want to start looking into, but we're not in there yet.
So tonight, if you make a decision on changing things, that's not.
Not, not right now, no. We're, we're trying to get a lot done in a short period of time, and we're trying, we've met as a committee three times. We're trying to get everything implemented as fast as possible without making any errors for the busy tourist season. But there's going to be more, it's going to be an evolving process, and it's going to get fine tuned, and, and there's probably going to be some changes along the way.
But this, this parking ordinance is strictly to all public parking, public areas. Do any other?
Well, what you have to say is, is the rumor is, is you're going to put parking meter downtown again.
No, no.
No?
No. No.
Because that was what I was told last week.
And the motivation is the, to not only look out for the residents, but to look out for the businesses specifically downtown.
You can't have somebody park in front of a business for eight hours because they first went to the item.
Right, right.
We understand.
And, and, and no matter what you do with the parking enforcement, there's always going to be, I'm sorry, I don't know if I.
No, no.
Yeah, and, uh, there, there's always going to be, um, some, uh, some people would like it to be totally free parking. Some people would like to have paid parking. The motivation is to keep the customers moving. Create a place for them to park. We'd like to still have that free. I think we're looking at the free, maybe one hour parking. So that people can still park for free, but we want to see them moving along and not left there and go to other locations and not be shopping in our downtown district.
So as I had declared, it'd be three foot the first hour, and then after that, it'll be after ten if you wanted to stay.
Right.
For two hours or three hours.
And then there's a three hour max on it, correct?
Guys want to make the six, so know the parking fees recommendation is using a park app, not physical meter. So it'd be metered through and out, not through.
Correct, right. There'd be, there'd be signage and QR code and that's all.
And then I'll get more into that when we get down to the, to the item, to the agenda item. But if you have any questions, just let me know, right?
Any other?
Well, I don't know if the public has enough information to even ask a question about it.
Okay.
And so I, I didn't know if we have copies of what we talked about during the parking committee that can be.
Sure.
Available for everybody in there because.
Yeah, I, I haven't done it either, particularly one of the committees, but.
Yeah.
As you, public cabinet.
I mean, you can, and, and Ryan's here, he could probably clarify a lot more questions on the spot, or give them a brief description of what we've been talking about. I mean, if you don't mind.
Yes, we don't, no, he had his hand up. Go ahead, Ryan.
Um, so I don't, I don't know if it's easier to find, to pass out, like, if we're not copies of just kind of what we discussed, we have that.
Could you give a summary right now, and then after, then maybe make some copies?
The plan gives land to be parking in town. So it would be street side parking. This is all through a paid mobile app. So there would be free one hour parking street side, and then there would be, you have to pay for additional hours. Um, there is recommendation from the committee to have little overflow lot to be day and overnight parking. We need St. Anthony's parking lot in kind of state, call it whatever it is, a mix of permit parking for employees, and then it would be paid hourly parking community app. Um, for our downtown parks, so red, white, and blue, um, at Chief Park, and a couple of other parks. It would be free three hour parking. That would have to be just monitored for our meter maid or whoever we would hire for them or our police staff. Um, there would be, it's, um, parking at Dock Three, like, there would be three hour parking, there's entire permit parking there at the boat launch. It would be, it's going to be six hours a day with a trailer, and then the Hamilton would be three hour parking. But I do have it, there's a bunch of different areas. So I don't know if it'd be easier to just give you that, it's like a two or three day job, and then just all of that proposed changes.
I didn't bring anyone.
That can pass out to everybody. Logistically, so I'm going to stop downtown, and I'm going to go into store. I have to open up an app and tell the city that I just parked my car in front of a business so that I can walk into the bank, do a deposit, and walk back out. That's what you're telling. Yeah, it'd be the same as you using a good coin. There is, me too, there was for, what's the number seniors? So it would be a permit that we're recommending that would be a yearly permit that they could pay for twenty dollars a year. For locals of the city, twenty five, or local townships that they could park year round and as possible.
Wow, I'm really.
And they, and they would have stickers on their cars then.
It'd be a Hank dagger thing.
This is public. All of us, if you want to do this downtown, because I go downtown, I want to have lunch with families, and then I'm going to walk down the street and go to the market or whatever. And I'm gone for more than an hour. Um, I have to pay money. That's what you're saying through this app.
Yep. It would be a dollar an hour.
It's just so wrong. And I, I, for someone, and that's your wrong, right? You're wrong, yeah. That is just so wrong. I'm very against it.
This isn't anything new. Most cities around us do it.
Yeah, well, that's.
Do, the Oregon Potash, he's got meters.
But you, you have to understand.
No, no, I understand, but I think it's not nothing new that we're.
Purpose, we're not trying to penalize the local community, but with the park, let me finish. But what we're trying to do is to have spots available for you instead of the people hopping on the boats, and they're seeing all of this free parking, and you're wondering where a parking spot is. So.
Because of the ten dollars.
This, this is, this is because people are going to start using options that are free, which will be the spots that you do like, and then you'll be mad because those spots will be occupied.
The why is this a year round thing?
Well, we can talk about that part of it. You're right about that. We, there's a lot we can take into consideration.
I, I'm sorry, I would just point out that I think that this isn't like just a brand new problem because of somebody else charging. I mean, there was a time when we had meters. Um, I understand why we don't have now, and I'm not giving an opinion either way on the parking fee or anything, but just that parking not being turned over and people taking advantage of, um, on, I mean, I remember a very long time ago, somebody saying, one of our off, or one of the, one of the officers saying like, well, how much is the ticket? I'll just pay the ticket instead of moving my car because it's cheaper. So, um, and that's not fair to local businesses. And I mean, I know right now, it's supposed to be two hour limit, right? But there's not, it's harder to enforce that without funding it.
Yeah, we did think about exercising a way for certain businesses to be valid, that they can validate you possibly. I believe there's an option of that because we don't want to, I don't think it's our intention to penalize the local community.
Or people who are actually using the businesses.
Yeah.
We want people to be downtown. We want parking to be available for them.
Go ahead, Betsy.
I'm here, and I, I do want to remind us all that the reason that so many municipalities have parking fees is not only just to govern how long you stay in a parking spot, but we have a lot of parking lots to maintain and segments. They need to be resurfaced. We need to have walkable sidewalks and streets. There's a lot of work that has to be done, and there's not a lot of money to spread around and pay for it. And honestly, this helps to get other people who are not residents of the city and not taxpayers to help pay for those services that they use, including parking lots that need to be serviced. So this, I, I know it can be inconvenient for us, and already having to use another app and having one of that working, but during the city being a really better dog of keeping these parking places in good shape by charging everybody a little bit, I think we may be better off in the long run. Otherwise, very least, that's what I'm trying to follow. So nobody wants to drive, and nobody can park because it's such a mess.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Hill?
And I'll, I'll rebut that with, the reason why the parking meters were removed is because your city was losing money on it, the whole operation. It takes money to maintain it. It takes money, you're going to have to pay fees to the, to the app. You're going to have to pay your police to do, or a meter made. And I'm going to assume that this has not been checked for budget, right? Because, and it's going to be a huge unknown going into the first season, and it just, the last time that the city charged for parking, it created so much bad will. If, if, if it was a, and I understand that you have a real problem with what's going to be downtown Dock One parking. And, and I, I simplifies with that, and I'm not sure I have a different option to, to help alleviate that problem, but.
Well, the other thing.
Everyone hates going downtown Potash. Everyone hates going downtown.
Alright. If you're going to talk, please raise your hand, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's, that's.
Eric?
What's the policy for this situation in event that someone doesn't have a smartphone? I know that a lot of our visitors tend to be older. Granted, some of the larger groups, there's a tour bus, that's not going to be an issue, but for like an individual who doesn't have a smartphone for one reason or another, their personal preference against technology, various things, you know, use a simpler phone. What can they do?
Let me answer that.
Yeah.
Um, there's going to be a phone number on the sign that's going to give them an option to call City Hall, and we're looking at having, uh, another option of a, of another parking lot where they could go. That would be, uh, maybe behind the businesses or somewhere that would give them another option. We, we had a meeting with Susan Marie. Um, we went, we met with their city manager, their chief of police, their, uh, parking enforcement officer, and their, um, financial department to try to, um, troubleshoot this whole process. Um, and, uh, it was a good meeting, and they recommended the parking app, and they haven't had, they kind of went down the rabbit hole of what if, what if, what if, what if? But they haven't experienced anything like that. It's been user friendly. And this one right here, you don't have to have, have the app with QR code. It can take you right to the browser. So you can do it through the browser. And with the, the parking meters that we used to have, um, they were so old that we were unable to update them to increase the, the, uh, parking fees adequately to keep up with the park, the increasing cost of the parking enforcement officer. Um, those meters were, uh, pretty outdated. So you, you, to, to, um, enforce parking, you're either having parking meters, parking, um, controlled parking lots, or, um, parking kiosks in the controlled parking lots where you grab a ticket, and there's an arm that drops down and then locks you in, and then you got to pay for that. Those are thirty two thousand to start out with. The parking kiosks are, um, starting price of seven thousand dollars. But looking at all the various locations where you need a visible kiosk where you'd park in the downtown, there'd be multiple kiosks. So the, the, what we, what we came to the conclusion was it was going to be a parking app, or it was going to remain with the free parking. And the free parking, at, at one time, the, the, when the DDA looked at this, they wanted to make very, be a very friendly community to create opportunities for people to make it easy for them to go into the businesses. But we, we, the problem that we came up, came upon over the last few years is it's been increasing harder to keep the flow of traffic going. People were parking at, in front of these businesses, and then they're going elsewhere for the day, and they weren't, uh, frequenting the businesses. So that's been our motivation. How do we help out the community? How do we help out the businesses? And at the same time, we don't want to create anything that's cumbersome or, or exorbitant, where, where it's too hard for the, for the residents or customers to pay.
I do want to say in the recommendations, there was three lots that would stay free, three hour parking. It was going to be the north, clearly here, five in City Hall, that would remain free. That's made twenty to thirty spaces that would be free three hour parking, not throughout. Uh, Truckee Street, upper level, there's that little section that's about twelve spots up there, and then the visitors bureau lot, which is a city park home as well, would remain free three hour. Not out.
Do you think that, do you think that some of this, uh, like the island and all of it, they'll be parking in the residential areas?
I hope not. Have to see what happens.
It already is.
What we're hoping to do in overflow lot at Marquette Street would be, um, priced to incentivize them to park there. Be an opportunity for us of the city to make some money and to kind of direct the island parking.
That's our plan.
Um, I know that obviously, I hope it doesn't become a problem for us, but speaking to coworkers on the island and company back custody. Back custody is already having a huge issue with it, and they're already writing tickets left and right. Um, forty five dollars for parking in a church parking lot when you're not supposed to anywhere. Um, and they're all of them monitoring the downtown parking lots, um, right on Main Street. So I do know personally from people who have gotten tickets, um, back custody is already been having an issue for the last few weeks. Um, and obviously hoping that we don't, but it's already, it's already a full issue.
We're trying to do a stem of problem that we see coming. We're trying to see if we can get it handled on it before.
Yeah, before it comes back.
Mr. Graves?
Um, since we're going to have to use an app to park, we better be carrying our phones. Is that correct?
Yes, uh, or, yeah, because you'd either be using the parking app or your, um, browser on your phone or calling City Hall. Or you could be redirected to the free route or free parking lot.
Yes, ma'am?
Would there possibly be an option, say a business wants to buy a couple of parking spaces in front of their business, and they could have their, their name put on a, a post that says parking exclusively for such a just, I, I lived in Lansing, and when the city switched over to a parking downtown, which was a nightmare, of course. Um, the, the city council had approved, uh, businesses, five spots that they paid for on an annual basis exclusively for their customers. I don't know, I mean, I'm sure there were interlopers, but I, I don't know if that's something that was.
I don't think it's anything that's been talked about at the committee level yet, so.
We'd have.
It's an idea. Thank you. Anyone else here? Eric?
Policy, under this, we have a policy. What would, uh, if you like, on say event weekends? Um, would the app, I imagine it probably wouldn't be in effect for like St. Street during the St. Amos card though, obviously, but would it be in effect for other lots on the, or during events?
Yeah, it, it, it's going to build, give us, um, it's going to get information out to the, the customer. So when they come to a lot, and most likely, well, how I envision it, if that parking lot is closed for an event, there's going to be a sandwich board. But when they bring up that QR code, it would tell them the restricted times and the reason. One of the things we were, um, looking at is for downtown, a lot of the times will, will get complaints that people are parked maybe for Fourth of July parade, or they, they didn't know, they didn't see a sign or whatever. This time, it would, when they bring up their, um, parking app on their phone, it would give them specific, um, instructions regarding that event for the day.
Would it be, turn, I guess, would it be turning off or directed in a, a different way?
We can block out times where would be unavailable.
And it'll direct you to an open parking lot.
Yep.
Driver's say. I think it's safe to say that this is a reaction to, obviously, the, the, if by chance, regulatory stamp, the fairytale to quit charging ten dollar. They're reporting to quit charging ten dollar, the city will back the apartment.
I don't think that's been discussed either.
No, and, and, and so it, 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 the, the motivation has increased because of that. But this has been something that has been ongoing since they took away the meters. And, 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 and it's, when I would go to a DDA meeting, um, they would always joke, this, what's the number one, uh, debate that we have in your community? And they all say parking, just because it, it, you're, you're not, you're not, there's always going, you're always going to be divided on the best way to handle parking. And so, um, the, at the time when we took away the parking meters, there was a concern that people were parking their vehicles. there was a concern that people were parking their vehicles and leaving them there, or employees were parking there and it wasn't, wasn't available for customers. So we heard from businesses, the while I was there for the DDA, unhappy they were with the current parking.
And it, we.
And it did happen.
We also should, we don't have information with us, but we, we went, we looked at several different companies and we took a route that was the minimal amount for investment on our end. So I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it's easier to set this up with, with the minimum amount and it's probably easy to take this one away. It's not a full blown hardware issue.
No long-term commitment, two hundred fifty a month.
Yeah, there we go. So something that if we did decide to pivot away from it, our investment side is, uh, minimal, so.
Anyone else here?
Um, Jim?
I just, I just wanted to congratulate you guys on taking the time as quickly as you have. Is it reactionary if you started charging ten dollars for parking in all those places? People are really looking for. But to do this is, you had to do it and it looks like you've done a whole lot of hard work to do.
Thank you. Neil, you?
So you, you just mentioned that the company's charging two hundred fifty bucks a month and I assume that you're gonna be funding meter making. What are the economics on this? What's our, the city's monthly cost?
Well, there's, there's a lot of different layers in there, Neil. Um, um, like you said, there is a financial aspect because we're, we're gonna need, um, some of the parking lots are gonna be, need to be striped. There's gonna be some of the parking lots, all of them are gonna need adequate signage. And some of the parking lots are gonna need to be fluffed up a little bit with some gravel and grading. So there is a financial aspect besides that two hundred fifty a month. Um, based on the, the research that we've done, uh, being optimistic, trying to be realistic with the overflow lot at the Little Bear, we feel that we'd be, would be able to cover a seasonal, um, uh, parking enforcement officer. I'm not sure if that would be a forty hour a week or not. And again, we're still in the early, early stages of trying to get this information to council.
Um, I take offense to the terminology of your main.
There you go.
In the country, they have a man walking, a man walking around with a sign on his back that says, no, no, it says something else.
The parking ambassador.
Yeah, parking ambassador.
The ambassador.
Maybe that's what we should call it because meter made is out of the.
Let's be the last one here.
I, I, I think why, why, why it's optimistic that you can make money to pay for somebody to do some enforcement is I think the plan is to cut the price for a day's parking. The eight dollars versus ten dollars in the parking lots everywhere else in town. I know that part, well, if it's me, I'm looking for the eight dollar parking. I think most people in this room, if it's the signage is good, that's where they're gonna go. It's close to the fairies, I think you'd be able to make enough money there, so. That's all I have.
Jim?
Um, are we making accommodations for events at Little Bear?
Yes, yes, yep.
With that, a parking app will also build, just like if it was a special event through the visitor bureau, we'll build a control that for the parking lot, for, for the Little Bear events.
Senior discount.
Okay, yeah, and free handicap for seniors as well along the downtown.
Drive safe.
The local bad seniors. The council should at least consider a local bad system for the entire community, not ju, not just the seniors. To allow them to come down there.
I know at a previous meeting, there was talk about, um, citizens that actually work on the island and parking right on the street and taking advantage of that, but I think your three hundred limit's gonna, gonna help out.
Thank you. Alright, any no more? And with the motion and the second to go, a lot of public hearing.
Was there something online time comment?
I don't think we. Don't allow it, don't allow it.
I move we close the public hearing.
My second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed. Alright, next up, public hearing, non-family dwellings in residential district. Motion and a second to go into public hearing on this subject.
I'll make a, go ahead and, and I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed. Right, we're gonna public hearing on non-family dwelling, residential areas also referred to as technically as boarding houses or, a lot of people call them employee housing. Anyone here in the public? Kathy?
Okay, well, first I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council and the city manager for this opportunity. We like, we like to know our neighbors, we like to be able to trust our neighbors. The neighbors look out for neighbors. They say, I haven't seen you in a while, are you okay? Or I'm stuck out of town, could you watch my house? Or my kids are doing a fundraiser for school sports. This is all gone when neighborhoods become short-term rentals and employee housing. We need to know who's next door. And when I refer to neighborhoods, I'm purposely not getting into the weeds of R one and R two and the like. It doesn't matter what the designation is, it's a neighborhood, a neighborhood where people live and raise families. Several years ago, a city council in a well-intentioned move decided to limit the number of short-term rentals to eighty. At a recent city council meeting, it was revealed that although the city thought there were only twenty-eight with two pending to make thirty short-term rentals, because that was the number that was registered with the city, unbeknownst to the city, it found out that there are thirty or forty more in addition. Rentals, short-term rentals that aren't registered with the city. That means that could be anywhere at that time, between fifty-eight and seventy short-term rentals in our neighborhood. The combination of registered and unregistered short-term rentals exceeds the initial number to council. Decided on several years ago, clearly the short-term rental situation got out of control. Well, I bring up short-term rental for this because that got out of control. Now the council is exploring limiting the number of employee housing in neighborhoods. Perfectly good housing will only be occupied half a year. Perfectly good housing that will stand empty for half the year. Given the past experience of how people skirt the issues, how some just go back doing whatever they want, regardless of zoning ordinances and city council decision, I am standing firm on a number of employee housing allowing neighborhoods to be zero. Why? It's simple, no one's got to apply for a variance, no inspections, no keeping track of how many there are, just say no. Also, if there are any current employee housing in, in the neighborhood, and if they have never applied for a change of use, then they should not be rewarded for being grandfathered in. You can't be grandfathered in for doing something that's illegal. That would be like me going down to Fred's bank, robbing it, getting caught, saying, oop, sorry, giving the money back to Fred and not, and not expecting to be disciplined for it or go in jail. That's what grandfathering in would be if you give back to people who are already doing something illegal. In my opinion, the city council does, if the city council does not stop this invasion of our neighborhoods, we will be having a conversation just like we had of the short-term rentals recently, here in a couple of years about the employee housing invasion in our neighborhoods. I would like to close by thanking the mayor and the city manager and the council for allowing, allowing me to voice my opinion. I would also like to close with a quote from Albert Einstein. If you keep doing the same things, you'll end up getting the same results.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah. I have an employee, I was across the street from me. There's at least nine people living in that three-bedroom house, I think that they have added to it. But because they do shift work, I've got comings and goings throughout the night. Um, uh, because it's a twenty-four, I, I'm assuming it's twenty-four hours, I'm judging by who, who the employees belong to, but, um, I get horns honking because they're, they wanna let whoever's inside know that their wife is here at two in the morning, one in the morning, three in the morning. Um, I get, uh, where they wanna stand and talk outside the, the door to the trucking is very loud, that, that goes on all summer. Last night, no, it was two nights ago, there were eight of them out, out on the front porch, talking as loud as they possibly could, well into the night, I, 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 I just, it's, it's just tiring. Uh, because I know I'm in for a very long summer of not being able to sleep because of that. I have talked to the, uh, the guy that owns it, I mean, he, he, uh, does try to keep the noise to a minimum. I will be talking to him again, but you know, shouldn't there, if, if this stuff is being allowed, shouldn't there be some rules that they have to abide by? Uh, all of them so that, uh, you know, there is no sitting outside talking, um, or what, you know, because again, they, they can get quite loud and at night, of course, the sound carries much better. Um, they shouldn't be outside raising a bunch of, of noise. Um, maybe, uh, there should be rules as to how many garbage cans they can have. Because what happens is if you've got nine people living in a house, uh, that's a lot of garbage for one, Kirby Kirby, I don't know what you guys think of what they're called here, but Kirby Kirby, um, for the garbage. Somebody forgets to take it out because there's really no assignment, uh, then it overflows. And then the birds get in it and scatter it around and then it ends up a binard. So, uh, noise is an issue, garbage is an issue, um, you know, they're, they're not very friendly. Uh, last year, I was sitting on my porch and I saw some suspicious activity going on, quite a bit of it. There's, uh, people, you know, you see bags, uh, and money changing hands and you see, um, spoons lit up, I mean, I don't know why you would use a lighter under a spoon under normal circumstances, um. So I saw a lot of that last year, um, I had no idea what's going on in that house, who those people are. Um, but I know one thing after last summer, I don't trust them. And if that's a safe people this year, I don't know if it is yet, but I'm not gonna trust them this year either. And I don't even know what to do as far as regarding the police, you know, you say that there's suspicious activity. Well, by the time the police get there, there's nothing to see, you know, the, whatever's, transactions have occurred, um, it's, it's all done. But, um, anyway, I, I can go on and on and I won't.
Thank you. Jonathan?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask the speaker, what address that is at?
I can tell you my address.
That would be fun.
It's two, two, zero, forty-two.
Thank you very much.
Jim?
I'm, I'm curious about some definitions and details. Um, for example, the hospital that is over time, leased property for private nurses, visiting doctors, et cetera. Would that be considered employee housing that you want to get rid of? Um, should two or three teachers, single people, find a house to rent and decide to live together? Is that something you want to protect? We have trouble finding housing for teachers. Uh, the hospital has said they have trouble finding a staff because of housing. So some of the details are how are you going to apply this?
Jonathan, you wanna answer that one here or?
Sure, Jonathan Shield, that's ours. So I, my company's been hired to, uh, minister and enforce, uh, all rentals from the city, uh, starting about two months ago. Um, so the reason I was asking about that address is to make sure I have a complete list of, of these, uh, non-family housing in the residential, in, in the whole city, but mainly in the residential area, this is what we're speaking on tonight. So the ordinance is very clear, um, with rules, with traditions, um, on, on what non-family housing looks like, where it's located. Uh, you know, I'm sure for a lot of valid reasons, uh, enforcement has been, uh, over, over the years. And so city council, I think, uh, realize, uh, and, and it has the same concerns as the citizens that, uh, now is the time that they want to, uh, make sure the existing ordinances are enforced. And, and so, uh, right now, I am gathering the, researching the information on where these are all located. And, and I have a semi-complete list. And it is, uh, it's very difficult for the non-family housing because this list, there are no city lists at this point. So it really is citizens and council members, uh, others that, um, know where one is and they contact me and, and I write that down. So, uh, my next step, uh, literally this week, I'm sending out letters to, uh, the list that owners on the list that I have. And I'm starting that process of enforcement. And that will continue, uh, as new ones come, I will be contacting them. And I will be making sure every one of the non-family houses that I know of will be following the rules and laws that are in place. And, and some of those rules are the garbage cans and, and noise and things like that. And so the police and I will be working together on some of those, um, night issues that, um, we can confirm. And, uh, I, I think you're gonna see a vast improvement, um, over the next year.
Jonathan, I have a question for you. Is, is there a way to suggest or, or make it mandatory for maybe them to have external camera monitoring systems? That'd be, that'd be an easier way to try to have evidence of one thing happening or the other.
So, so I believe the ordinance, the way it's written now, um, I don't think we can mandate that. What I would suggest is, um, uh, the, the, I think those cameras and things now are very, very inexpensive.
Just documentation.
And, and if the neighbors can put one on their front porch to see that, that will absolutely be evidence that I can use to go to court.
Jonathan, um, just to kind of follow up on what you were saying. Um, our, we have our, uh, districts, we have an R one, residential one, and R one is for single family homes. We have R two and that's for two family homes. And then we have R three, which is for multiple families. And where, where does the employee housing fit into that, into the R three, correct? If there's, if there's multiple.
And it's allowed and, uh, R two.
R two.
And, and that is what I, I believe this discussion, at least in the past few meetings, has really been about on, um, not only the enforcement part, but the ones that exist, but, um, whether you want, uh, to allow more. Because it is a use allowed, right now the ordinance is allowed under the conditions nine hundred feet apart and, and some other, uh, regulations of, uh, where they can be, but it is a use allowed. So, so you could see, um, new ones that would register the inspected. Um, and that's the other thing, so with this is I am going to be inspecting every one of these. I am gonna be making a couple things that, uh, I heard tonight. And we'll be making sure that they add a change of use and at some point, um, are, are allowed to, to do that. Um, and, uh, I will be checking to make sure that existing ones are farther than nine hundred feet apart. I will be looking at building codes, uh, there's a vast length of rules and regulations that I will be able to look at to make sure they're safe and, and healthy for the people that are in there, but also safe for the neighbors and neighborhood.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
I have, uh, two questions, one is, well, who's have a comment? Um, do you have families outside our house, but they're not directed, I don't think we can direct them at a neighborhood?
I don't think there's a law against it.
People might get.
Absolutely not.
There's no law against it, so, I mean.
We, we would.
I'm not saying you should, I'm just saying. I'm not saying you should, I'm just saying.
I don't think it could be a problem.
No law against it.
Do I contact the county? Or do I? And then, and I will give you my phone number, you stop in and knock on the door, I can give you whatever information you want.
Sure.
Mr. Cronin?
Mr. Mayor, is, is, was going to ask, stop any more in any residential area in terms of employee housing? And I think the difference between doctors and stuff like that is one seasonal and one is year-round thing. Teacher would be a year-round thing. Somebody at the hospital, I wouldn't consider that employee housing like we would the seasonal employees that are here to work on Mackinac.
I think some of the medical, though, some of them do come in and out and they don't wanna be in a, they don't wanna be in, per se, a hotel and they, they do rent out. But, you know, they won't have spoons lit up at night. Like, some of them might have.
You can't, you can't, it's covered.
Anyone else?
Well, I.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you have any response? Are we gonna continue to let houses be bought in residential areas? If they meet all the code, they can become employee housing. Are we gonna say, no, we're not doing that, we're going the other way? When limited short-term rentals, we don't want employee housing in residential areas. I just don't know where the leadership is coming from.
Well, that's, that is on our agenda, we are gonna talk about a cap, that is. But we have to have this public hearing, so. Ms. Perry?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, over on Mary Street, there's two houses that are employee housing. There's one house in between them, that's a real nice couple that have fixed it up. And then they both can walk out on their, out of their front door and look at the back of the housing that's across the street from Mary Ann. I'm not good at distances, but that's never, in no shape, form, or fashion, nine hundred feet between those three houses. And they're all employee housing, and they're all seasonal, and, right?
Uh-huh. Yeah. Well, and there should be a limit as to how many, I mean, like, if you have nurses and there's a duplex or whatever, that's different than having nine people in a three-bedroom home.
Well, that's what we're here tonight for.
But there is, we just, we had to hire somebody for enforcement.
Go ahead.
Um, so I'm in Portage, and, um, yeah, they're not nine hundred, but, um, so the one employee housing that I know of on the corner, then right next to it, it's an empty lot, I'm afraid, so, um, on the corner. Well, then, last year, they raveled that lot and put in parking. They're, they're, oh, there are people in the house would park there. So, um, then this year, they have fenced it in and put, um, private parking for these two business names. So here in my neighborhood, not only have I got employee housing, you know, but I've got a parking lot in my neighborhood now. So a business parking lot. So I, like, I would question, how did that even happen? You know, that now there's a private parking lot in my neighborhood within a block of me, block and a half of me, you know, so, um, I, I'm concerned about that. And then, um, another employee housing, they added on a studio apartment to make another bedroom for businesses. So I'm thinking, you bought a house and you turned it into employee housing, and you added on to it, or more employee housing. So I would question that. So that's the things that we're seeing going on, I think, on Portage, is, you know, some of those issues, and it just keeps coming up and coming up. And I would totally agree that I would not, I'm against having anything bought grandfathered in where if it was not done properly and it's not done legally, then we're rewarding them for grandfathering them in. And if we set a limit, if you guys are talking about a limit, then of letting more come in, we're already over what our limit was supposed to be. And now I'm hearing that we're over that, and are we gonna bump that limit, you know, to accommodate more people coming in? Um, that would be my concern. And I'm getting ready to sell my house shortly, and my concern would be people looking at it annoying, seeing people coming down with all this, being close to a parking lot they might not wanna be.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
So employee housing is, is necessary here. Um, there's really no difference between employee housing and short-term rental people other than what they look like and where they're from. That's the main point here. People don't let people in their neighborhoods that don't look like them.
No, that's not true.
Oh, no.
Don't interrupt, let him speak.
No, hey, let him talk, please.
Full-time. Doesn't matter where the employee housing goes, it seems like they're being pushed out. Um, now we're gonna talk about putting a cap on housing in the commercial business district. I own two businesses now. How many p-shirt shops are limited? How many bars are limited in the city? How many bud shops are capped in the city? There is no cap. But again, you're trying to fix a problem that wasn't created by business owners or people are trying to provide service, but you're, you're trying to take it away from them. I have a family of six. I need two hotel rooms when we travel. I only need one VRBO or Airbnb. There's a need for them. And there's really no difference whether I rent my apartment to a company for seven months or, um, a, a citizen from San Angeles for seven months. I bought a building that has had weekly and monthly rentals since the eighties. Now I'm being told that we might cap that, and now I'm being charged five hundred dollars a year to continue the practice that's been here since the eighties. And to, to say a nurse and a teacher, who I well have relatives are, are different than an employee, which I know who you're talking about, that come from other countries to work here, that are necessities, you can shake your head all you want, that are necessities here, or we wouldn't be able to function. I didn't think this way before I owned a business. If we don't have employee housing, we don't have businesses. There's just not enough people here to help keep a job. I've had cook positions posted for two years. I have one local employee cook. I brought employees in from Mackinac Island, from Lansing to cook to have, that are renting full-time houses here. But taking that away from them isn't their problem, it's not their fault, because they can't afford to buy a house. I bought a business that was for sale, I bought an apartment building that was for sale. Anybody could have bought that. Somebody could have bought the Casey Hall on the, on, on the football field and made twenty apartments. But no, we're not talking about that. We're talking about employees who don't fit your script of who you want to live with and trust. That's what we're talking about. You need these employee houses. I worked here at nights for twenty years. Never in twenty years have I seen a spoon lit up.
I see.
Crime happens no matter what color you are, no matter where you're from, or no matter where you live, okay? You can't just place blame because you don't like something.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Ma'am?
That's nothing to do with anybody's origin, I don't know who these people are. All I know is that they come and go. They come and go and they're noisy. And maybe they can live where he is, where he is being woken up at three in the morning and two in the morning. This has nothing to do with, with somebody who's from a different country. I've never spoken to these people. They're not the people that will come down and talk to you anyway. I, uh, there shouldn't be that many people I wanna, I want family, that's why I'm in a resi- I have no problem with people being there. But the question isn't whether they're here, the question is where do they live? And should there be nine people living in one house? No. And not in a residential neighborhood. There should be a solution, I understand that people may take, have, um, need to have employees. I don't care what country they come from. All I care is that I can go to sleep at night. And not everybody, you're, you're, you're right about one thing, crime can happen anywhere. But I know what I've seen over the last year, and, uh, and I don't like it, and I shouldn't have to live across that, that I don't know who these people are. I don't know anything about them, and you can't get to know seasonal workers. They're not invested in this town.
Mr. R F C?
So, you know, this, okay? And I'm hearing a little bit of, we didn't enforce the existing regulations that are beyond the law. That's, uh, John, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last name. Okay, kind of just rolling right now, we're seeing the existing regulations as you're allowing the folks that paid the cost wasn't enforced before. The council needs to be very careful about passing the new regulation, okay? Uh, without enforcing the regulations that were in place, okay? To see if that doesn't have the same impact. And taking a careful look at the existing regulation to say, well, we wanted to begin, right? And so I think I need to be very, very careful, because whenever you face three, like, regulation limits, right? In other words, you're gonna create a false economy, sorry. Where you're gonna have employee housing that's not gonna go up in value, because it's the only one licensed on one of thirty or one of fifty of this type of missing, okay? You create this false economy, right, of limits, okay, on what's available, okay? I'm not proposing a right answer, I'm just, as a public comment, saying, let's be very, very careful about the actions that you're taking, making sure we're enforcing the existing regulations that are already on.
Thank you. Mr. Cronin?
I just wanna, I hope you didn't misunderstand me, that I made a distinction between versions. I was just talking about seasonal workers versus people that want to give a key. I have friends that are in the workforce here that come from other countries and I've made relationships with them. I've been to many committee meetings, many council meetings, where the end chief of police here, and the police reported that they get little bit, no reports of any misconduct from any of these employees. So I, if you see it, you see it. I'm not saying that you didn't see anything. I'm just saying that the reports that I get to this level, since I've been involved, haven't included that we had a problem with the employees that were staying in employee houses. My concern is neighborhoods staying, right? That's it.
Mr. Dries?
Um, we have a tough job. We, we live in a huge area that is flooded with people, service workers, tourists, et cetera. And not only that, but we've made terrific accommodations for Mackinac Island to ship freight and accept garbage. And we've sat for hours in this room and deliberated how to do that with respect to the island and with respect to businesses. I think you've gotta import at least as much time into how we respect people, tourists and workers that come here. Um, because with all those tourists and workers, these businesses are dead.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I'd like, I'd like to at least say, I started. My journey in this area is a seasonal worker, and I worked side by side with a lot of these individuals, and now they're family members to me. So it's, i- if it's the ethnicity of the ones that I think that you're talking about, I've never, most of the, the people that come over here won't even, won't even touch drugs. And if there is spoons being passed around, those should have been immediate phone calls to the authorities, because it, it, you know, it just doesn't make any sense. I, I wanna, I wanna hold weight to what you said, and I, I just need more evidence, because I've been accused of being that drug guy and that person, and it's not a good feeling, especially when it turned out for my case not to be true. It feels like a stereotype to me. And I, I still value what you said, but I wanna make sure that we don't unfairly stereotype them.
They don't know for sure what's going on. Well, that's why I didn't even call.
I, I would call.
And then I'll let someone else make.
I think I would be more comfortable with you calling and clearing it up instead of coming here with unsubstantiated accusations.
I, I wasn't accusing anybody.
That's all right, maybe you don't understand how it happens and how it feels to be accused like that without not an ounce of evidence, but I'm just trying to let you know it's not. I, I really wish that you had more information to, to follow up on what you said, I really do.
Anyone? Mr. Hill?
I'll just do a quick one. I don't, I also want you guys to understand that employee housing isn't, isn't just important for the businesses downtown, or the bigger businesses around, or the seasonable, the seasoned businesses, or Mackinac. I have had to create employee housing for my intern, and I'm a one-man operation. So, you know, that's how important employee housing is in this area. You know, we need to bring, we need to be able to bring people in and house them somewhere. I've set aside one of my long-term rentals to house my intern, because he couldn't come here and work for me if I didn't have a place for him to live. And there's no, there's very few people that can volunteer to help me out from the yard. So bringing people from out of the area is, is important for me personally. And I see that as an extension toward the businesses that are open only seasonally, which, you know, it's difficult to live on a seasonal, a, a seasonal, uh, salary. So if you're gonna do that, then obviously you're not gonna be here. Some people can't be here when they're not working, and that makes sense. So they're gonna be housed in employee housing.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I just wanna say, um, we manage a lot of rentals. We manage a lot of long-term rentals, we manage a lot of short-term rentals, um, in the community, in the townships, in the city. And, um, you know, there's a process to people getting apartments. There's a screening process, there's application, there's deposits. There is a way to, and there's regulations that are in place that just aren't enforced in many areas. This community has not built housing in, in as long as I've been here, forever. So we are in a situation that is desperate. We've been like this for a long time, this is nothing new. We don't have housing for the hospital, the forest service, the coast guard, you know, every industry that's here, we lack housing for, we lack housing for our community. Um, I have, I have as many probably higher-end bad tenants that we've had to, to get out of a house that have trashed the houses I've had lower-end. You can't, you just can't say because they're a doctor or a nurse, they're, they're your best tenant. That's not always the case. But you go through a screening process. I can't even imagine how we're gonna handle all of this. I, this is a huge job for this community, but until we start building housing here, we're gonna have this problem. And we need, and we need workers. I mean, we, our day is filled with trying to get people in housing here for just to move here, to work here. Um, their, their kids live here. This is a, this is a twenty-four-seven for me and my business and the people that work in our office, constantly trying to build housing and trying to screen housing so that people are renting and taking care of the houses that they're allowed to rent. So I, I'm listening to everybody and I understand everybody's point of view. I just, I just think it's a, it's a big problem, and it's not gonna get solved, but we, but we do need housing.
Thank you. Cronin?
So I, I know as some of these communities we had, there was some discussion about employee housing, making the distinction between whether employee housing for employees that supported local businesses versus employee housing supporting Mackinac. Because if we don't do something that, I don't even know if you can do it, maybe. I, I, I don't know, but it's something to think about, that's, it's pretty clear where we get all those. This is not gonna end. We need to do something, so.
Thank you.
And I think the key word that Cheryl just mentioned was that people buy a house and that you're allowed to rent it to their employees. Unless they've gone through a variance and a change of use, they're not allowed to rent, to have their employees there. They have to, they have to do that. And I don't think they have. I think they just came in, bought a house, put four nine- Put four non, four or five non-related workers in it and said. Here's the summer. So they're not allowed. By any stretch of the imagination. So. I mean, I agree with what Cheryl's saying, but again. According to our rules, nothing's only new, everything, they're not allowed.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dufonah?
And I'm from Mackinac Island and I have, um, a house here in St. Ignace. Where some of my employees live. And, um. I've had that house for a long time. Um, and I did at one point. Register my house for twenty five dollars. And it was supposed to be inspected and all and, um. Nothing came of that, so. And I also was never presented with any kind of thing. My fault is I didn't look up the city ordinance. I, I should know better than that. But I was not presented with any rules at all. Um, you know, I knew about the nine hundred feet business, but, um. I wasn't. I wasn't aware of any that were around, around me that were employee housing that. Would make it that I could not have that there. So, um. I think that most of us who have, at least I like to think that most of us that have places here in St. Ignace. Want to do the right thing, want to. I mean, we, we don't want that kind of stuff to happen on the island. Noise, garbage, whatever, um, that's. It's not what we're all about. I guess there are bad apples always, but. Knowing what the rules are, knowing who we're supposed to talk to, knowing where we go to register. Those are the kinds of things that it sounds like Jonathan is going to start enforcing, but. I'm, you know, I'm hoping it's not, um. No, I guess I can't say that, but, uh. To, to some of us, it might be a surprise. And so I hope it's done gently, um, if it's possible. Because we need clear rules and you need enforcement, obviously. And the other thing I wanted to ask about was the cost. Um, I found this on, it's on one site and that was about registration and restructure. Has that been? Is, is this what it's going to be? Is this what you have to all decide it on?
Uh, i- if, if you're applying something up from the website currently, then yes. I'm not sure what you're looking at, but.
Yes, I mean, no, I don't want it. Five hundred dollars a year to register. And I, I guess I would wonder why, how the five hundred dollars a year came about. It's ours registering though, when it used to be twenty five.
Most of that's, most of that's going to the cost of for inspection. So we haven't been able to afford to inspect and enforce appropriately, so. Cost did go up for that, but that hopefully will remedy. Um, our lack of enforcement.
You're also charging for inspections.
That is correct. They're also, this is separate cost for inspection.
One time year or once every two years or something.
Is it once? Right.
Every two years, um. Or change in times, um, have you considered? Um, so. I guess it seems to me that that's a lot of money. Five hundred dollars per year. For the registration. Um, you know, I, I understand that there's some. Bad people doing bad things, but again, everybody's like that. Any chance that you. Like, I guess you have, you've already decided, is that right? You've voted on yet? I won't bet. But, um. I know for myself, I, I have got some great people that live in my house and, um, I have not had any problems that I know of. And, um, I would, and, and I think any employer would want to know immediately. I want to know if there's a problem. I don't want to live next to, I, I live next to an employee housing on the island. And I want, I want to know or I will complain. To whomever I am supposed to complain to if there's a problem. So. I think any employer is going to want to know whether they've got some bad people. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Hill?
Does the city allow to make these for something like that or is that supposed to be a crazy investment?
No, for short term rentals, for sure it's supposed to be a break.
Break even, yeah. It's a space for our inspection. I mean, we have to pay Mr. Shield.
You're paying, you're paying five hundred dollars to register a rental?
We're allowed to make money.
And twenty five bucks to inspect the things? Five hundred bucks a year, you're going to have to show me what the justification for that fee is. You're going to show me what you're giving me. You're going to have to show me what it's, what it's costing the city. You're going to have to show me. How, how the city is benefiting from it. Five hundred dollars a year to register a rental is asinine. That's just.
Betsy?
I can point out from previous discussions and committees that the city has to pay someone to. Find the rentals and get them registered. They have to pay for the paperwork for registration. They have to pay the salary of the person who keeps the books. They have to keep the website up so that everybody who needs to know where this information is here. Um, and it would not surprise me. That each time they have to register a different place and see where it fits in the regulations. It could cost that much to administer just what we already have. I would not be surprised.
Over sixteen hours to administer one rental at thirty bucks an hour. That's, no.
As far as, as far as the employee housing.
What is that?
I'm sorry. My name's Mark. I'm in Zoom. Uh, I'm more for the short term.
We don't allow, uh. Video at these meetings. Or Zoom comments, is that what? Right, or comments, uh, from video.
Anyone else here?
I guess I want to know what, what is charged, um, Mackinac Island for employee housing registration inspection?
I don't know. Yes, ma'am.
I've heard, um, that Mackinac Island wanted to move employee housing to. The mainland. I don't know whether it would be St. Ignace and or Mackinac City, but. Is that something that's happening or?
No.
No.
I, I have, just for your information, I have three clients on that kind of are actively building. Employee housing as fast as they can, large apartment.
Anyone else?
Move the close of the public hearing.
Thank you. Motion. Second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. I have a public comment on any subject. Three minute limit here. Anybody have any comment? On the public? Eric?
Go T Wolves.
Let me write that down.
Okay, consideration of the minutes of the May fifth, twenty twenty five council meeting.
I'll move in second minutes.
Have a motion?
I'll second.
The second to stop the minutes that printed. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? First up under business, dock three bathroom painting bid.
At, uh, April twenty first council meeting, city council authorized city manager to seek bids for the interior painting of the dock three bathrooms to include. Walls, ceilings, floor of the bathrooms and the fish cleaning station. City council authorized city manager to seek bids, uh, and the, the deadline for the bids were, was May fifteenth. The city received one bid from Spencer Painting for four thousand dollars. It says three to four thousand dollars in the bid tabulation. Um, and it, Spencer, um, Painting has done excellent work for the city in the past. And the big tabulation of the one bidder was in the council packet. City manager recommends to authorize Spencer Painting for the. The bathroom painting at dock three.
Will we accept the recommendation?
Have a motion?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Only one bid. Okay, please take the roll.
Mayor LaLone?
Yes.
Mayor LaLone?
Yes.
Councilmember Litzner? Yes. Member Loder? Yes. Councilmember Shepherd? Yes. Councilmember Wilber?
Yes.
Councilmember Iyer?
Lot split, Latour Resolution twenty five dash seventeen.
The, the lot split, split is located in the tourist business district at the corner of South Airport and North State Street. Uh, if you look and you see exhibit A, parcel A will be added to adjacent parcel. Of zero five two, seven hundred, zero four one, dash, zero, zero. And will essentially become, become a lot line adjustment. Um, there is an error if you look on the, uh, exhibit A. On the, prior to the split, the square footage should be ten thousand eight hundred and twenty eight. Um, I had a question about that earlier. Um, and this has been reviewed by the building inspector and myself. The, the, the lot that's, uh. Uh, one of the lots that's going to be split doesn't have adequate. Square footage for R one or R two, but since this is a simple lot line adjustment. And that, that lot would be added to the adjacent parcel, um, then that it was, is okay and is approved and recommended. Uh, by myself and the building inspector and Neil is here if there's any questions.
You're cutting off a little piece and attaching it to another piece.
That's correct.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
What is the difference versus what was sitting on our desk versus what was in the, um. We have a city of St. Ignace Resolution twenty five seventeen and then we had a different. It didn't say twenty five seventeen, but just said, what are the differences?
I think, I think the difference. Downwards, square footage of the original was ten thousand, not three thousand.
I saw that, I saw that that had just been copied from the new parcel. That was being.
Right, right. And, and I, I think that, uh, charisma, uh, was. I think she felt that she did not have the resolution, Andrea, correct me if I'm wrong, in the packet, so she. She printed up a resolution and, and gave it as a handle.
She didn't have the number on the one in your pack.
Oh, so the only difference is that a seventeen.
So what is the minimum lot size for them? And are we looking for a variance?
Well, it would be, uh, tourist business district, which would be dependent upon use, um, which would reflect R one or R two. So depending on how it's used. And at this time, it's just going to be a, a lot line adjustment added to the adjacent parcel. But if they're, if they're, if, so determine the square footage. You would have to know the use and then it would be R one or R two if it was a single family dwelling. Then I, I, I'm not sure if I have the, the mandatory, uh, minimum square footage, but it would be insufficient. And if there was a. Uh, two family dwelling and then it would be R two and then it would still be inadequate for the minimum square footage. If there was a tourist, if there was a business, then it would need it because there's no front setback. And then there's a, I might know it's for the. The, the setback requirements would be different because right now like R one would be, I think it's a thirty front. Thirty foot setback from the front and then maybe a twenty five setback from the, the rear, which would be, there would be very little property there to build a house. But tourist business district takes away that thirty, that, that there's zero lot line, uh, to the front. So if there was going to be a business there, then it would be sufficient. But at, but at this time, there's no use other than adding it to the, uh, adjacent parcel.
Well, is my understanding that parcel B is that commercial tours and if we take A off of that. Does that change that and make it go to R one? We have to dictate that, right?
Well, it, it would still be located in the, uh, the tourist business district, no matter what. It would be. It would just have to follow, depend on the use, which is non-determined at this point. It would have to meet the requirements of that. So if it was, if they wanted to put a single family house there, then they would have to abide by the R one regulations.
It doesn't change the zoning, it just. It doesn't change the zoning from tourist business. It just tells you how you apply the R one district to that piece of property.
So because they're split A and B, A and B means there's still one parcel that is.
It's still zoned, that whole area is still zoned under tourist business.
Is the house behind it in forty is single thing? Not in tour.
It's still in tourist business, but it, it would have to follow the R one. Yep.
So it has to follow the R one standard. It's still under tourist business zone.
Yep.
That house could be tore down and then used as.
You can, you can have residential within tourist business.
Right, right. But you have to follow the R one and R two rules.
I was, Mr. Olson told me different, so that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I apologize. I'm probably not explaining it as good as.
No, I, I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, just because you change, you, you have a duty in that zone, it doesn't automatically change you to R one. You're still, you're still in the tourist business zone.
Yeah, they'll have to abide by the R one and R two rules though. Because it's a. And this has been vetted by Brian.
Okay.
So, um. You mentioned that it's a lot line adjustment, but it looks like it's creating. Separate parcels, so I'm confused about. What do you mean a lot line adjustment? It doesn't look like.
The, the intention, correct me if I'm wrong, Neil, is to add it to.
The, the intention is to sell a small piece of property and leave the property over to the. Or deed, or deed it over their fam, their family.
The, the forty thing?
The parcel A. Yep.
This, the one, I'm not.
Parcel A.
Parcel is like smaller for.
Yeah.
Parcel.
Right, but is it, so is it? Going to be joining with the, whatever the forty is?
No, the, the, the.
This, to the north, this property here.
Oh, I see.
It's close to.
So.
To the north of where this house is.
Parcel A, you have a, a big pole barn.
Right here.
Correct.
Correct?
If it's allowed, so it's likely.
Yeah, if, if it's, if it's a business.
If it's a business.
Yep. If there's a business working out of it. Then it would be taxed as a business.
Okay.
Okay, I need a motion in a second to approve this. Lot split?
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion?
House supporter.
Support? Any more discussion? Please take the roll.
Mayor LaLone?
Yes.
Councilmember Litzner? Yes. Councilmember Pelter? Yes. Councilmember Shepherd? Yes. Councilmember Wilber?
Yes.
Councilmember Iyer? Yes. Mayor LaLone?
Yes. Motion passed seven to nothing. Thank you. This moved ran through the art assessor as well.
Really? I just want to apologize for my phone going off at a meeting. I never bring my cell phone to meetings. Uh, my daughter had a trauma thing happen to her today, so I just need to be available if. She needs me, so I apologize for that ringing during a meeting. My mom didn't answer, I'm calling.
Okay, next up golf course free schedule correction.
Okay, the, uh, golf course or the city council approved the twenty twenty five fee schedule on February seventeenth. Uh, there was an error in the fee schedule regarding the golf course fees. City council is asked to approve the corrected golf course fees that were included in the council packet.
In the blue on your sheet.
The words corrections.
Yep, yep.
And it looks like that there, they were supposed to be forty dollars more instead of fifty dollars more.
Yep.
Yeah. And the cart membership seemed to be off for whatever reason. But I'll make a motion. We approved the fee schedule correction for the golf course.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Discussion? Please take the roll.
Mayor Litzner? Yes.
That's a funny one.
Councilmember Pelter? Yes. Councilmember Shepherd? Yes. Councilmember Wilber?
Yes.
Councilmember Iyer? Yes.
Yes.
Mayor LaLone? Glad you liked it, really. You're already being counted? No. You can't campaign at a meeting.
No.
Next up, ordinance update, environmental. Next up ordinance update, environmental grass length, Resolution twenty-five dash eighteen.
Okay, the City of St. Ignace Code of Ordinances, Environment, Chapter twelve, Section twelve dash one oh one restricts maximum grass height to twelve inches. Neighboring communities restrict height from anywhere from five inches to ten inches. Mackinac City's maximum height is six inches. Sheboygan is five inches. Potoski is eight inches. La Sue is six inches. Munising is six inches. Gaylord is ten inches. Again, our ordinance states maximum grass height at twelve inches. From my understanding, twelve inches typically is for rural farming communities, not communities with a vibrant downtown, especially not tourist communities. Last year was my first year. Not sure if I had any local owner violations, but I can safely say that somewhere between ninety-nine percent to a hundred percent of the violations were from non-local property owners. By the time the grass is twelve inches, I've already received a lot of complaints along the way. Then we send out a letter. They have five days to comply from once they receive the letter. If we're on top of it, then the sixth day, then we contact a contractor. In a perfect world, the grass would be cut on the seventh day, which we know is not going to happen. By the time the grass is cut, it is most likely no longer can be cut with a lawnmower, which needs to be cut with a weed trimmer, and then the grass clippings are so long that they should be raked up and hauled away. Again, I just want to make sure that we're, I don't believe in having rigid rules or policies. Policies should be applicable for the betterment of the community without infringing down the property owner. I think that's extremely important. Zoning ordinance can, are designed to reflect the community's minimum expectations to protect property values, enhance community appeal for residents and visitors. Again, this is something that I, I don't think there was a, a local property owner that was a violation. It was property owners that were out of state that were extremely hard to get a hold of. And it was properties where the, the grass, where there's either nobody living there, there was no existing business there. And the grass was just by the time it was twelve inches, it was extremely long. So at this time, I'm asking, what, what does council, what would the council like to do?
Well, I'd like to do is the motion, or can I just have a comment?
Make a motion?
Okay.
I would make a motion that we accept the eight-inch rule, but also amend to allow the milkweed or milk thistle, whatever.
Take the milkweed out of the.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. To, yeah, to take it out of here to allow it, because I'm totally, I've already, I had heard that thing about butterflies before. It was meant in here. And also, I don't know if we could make this like the mowing rule after six one, because I think no may mow sounds really perfect for me. No mow may.
I, I those were the exact same.
Me too. I have this.
Questions I had.
And then the wild.
The wild part, but I think that might be.
But I think, I think when it says, if you look at our current ordinance, it, it says noxious and poisonous weed.
Yeah.
As long as you remove milkweed from the list there, poison ivy is already on the list. And it says other noxious or poisonous weeds. So I think, I think you have enough flexibility to do that except for the milkweed part. And then I don't know, I didn't know how you make it effective, like effective. I had on my note June first each year or something like that.
What is it after we do an ordinance, isn't it thirty days it takes effect?
So. So that, I understand, but that would be for this year, but the point would be that in the future.
Or when it starts.
That you, you don't start enforcing your eight inches until at least June first of that calendar year. I don't know what language you would use to make that happen. And maybe it's not relevant to get it going this year, because we'll have to wait thirty days anyhow for it to be effective.
But trying to amend it again.
I know. So I don't know what's the best way to take care of that.
You could just, and I would just suggest like inserting language like, like where it's at the height of twelve inches, say like after June first.
Of each, of each year.
Yeah, that may cause a fire hazard exceeding height of eight inches.
Yeah.
So, so are you saying that you'd leave it at the twelve inches until June?
No, 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 no. The, the, the eight inches, it becomes eight inches, but we don't start enforcing the ordinance till June first to be here.
But this can't take effect until thirty days after we.
Okay, no, I'm just trying to figure out where the no mow May comes in.
Yeah.
Are we sticking with the, like, June first?
What I'm saying is I would just say like that after June first each year, we know any growth of weeds or grasses that may cause blah blah would be eight inches. And I mean, I guess, yes, the implication would be that it could get as high as it gets in May. But I, I mean, I think there was a valid point that it's not likely, it's going to be a rare season when it gets above eight to twelve inches in May anyway.
Well, I, I only question I had is what if it was something that was tremendously long going into the fall the previous year?
Oh, well, then we've already got a ticket.
Now, and now we have some really long grass. I mean, would it be best to say May's can be up to twelve inches and then, then after May?
You want to, no.
You just want to know.
Just get rid of the twelve.
Yeah, I assumed it would have been enforced the year before.
Yeah.
Ideally.
Yeah.
And don't worry, June first.
Well, but I mean, you, you know, and, and that's one of the problems. You can't like, I mean, we're going to get into that in a moment, I think, with whatever you want to talk about. The non-family dwellings or whatever. If, if stuff that's written isn't enforced, it's useless. I mean, that's, that's the bottom line. You've got, what's here has to be enforced. If it's not enforced, throw it out. Don't use it. Amend the policy.
We have still continue effort to enforce it is what I'm saying.
I think if you start by notifying them with a letter, that's an ongoing issue from this prior.
Yeah, and I don't think there's an issue with saying to somebody, if you think somebody's grass is ridiculous in May because it, because somebody didn't enforce it, you send a letter saying June first, you're getting a citation.
Well, then it becomes a blight issue. So. And we got a, got a gentleman that is starting to force our blight ordinances too.
So.
I don't know if it happens.
Same.
Newsings.
Do we? First through.
I don't think so either. Taylor, so you want your motion to say that you're gonna, you want to get rid of milkweed?
Yeah, I want to distract milkweed from here, or delete milkweed from here.
Milkweed from.
From the list.
Acton twelve one oh one.
Yeah.
Weed, article weed control, height of eight inches.
And I would just put in that, there's a paragraph, I guess it starts any growth of weeds or grasses. I would just say like as of June first each year, any growth of weeds or grasses.
Is that your motion?
Yeah, that's my.
I'll second your motion.
And good with the eight inches.
Yeah.
You have a motion in a second. Discussion? Please take the roll.
Councilmember Pelter?
Yes.
Mayor, our council member, council member Shepherd? For Wilber?
Yes.
Councilmember Iyer?
Yes.
Mayor Procham.
Yes.
Mayor Lalone?
Yes.
Councilmember Litzner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to nothing. Next up, ordinance update, non-family dwelling residential districts.
Well, later on in the agenda, we'll, we'll be going into the parking fees and the plan for parking enforcement. But at this time, we're looking at the existing parking ordinance. And we're talking about. Non-family, non-family.
That's the next one. That's the next one.
This one, this one's going to be easy because I'm going to turn it over to that guy right over there.
Okay, Mr. Shield?
So in, in the report that, the memo that I gave you for this meeting, we, right now I count about fourteen non-family. And when I distinguish non-family from employee housing, there's some overlap, but they're not necessarily the same. There was some concern about teachers and one employee, things like that. That isn't really what we're talking about. Again, the ordinance definitions, I think it's fairly clear. We have, in, in that fourteen, we have six owned by Mackinac Island owners. We have two from downstate, two from out of state, and four local. I'm fairly confident there's a fair amount more out there. These are all just residential districts we're talking about, R two. There's additional employee housing and other, other areas. Hang on, I'm not, I, I think I just missed one. I guess six of those are in R two. Six, uh, six of those are in the.
Tourist.
Thank you. And one each in general, commercial and downtown.
Central business.
So the discussion tonight really is, I, I believe about those six that I know of and have a few after hearing some discussion tonight. Again, I believe there's others to the mayor. He believes there's some others slowly over time figuring those out. There, there has been no city documents that show where those were. We have a member of the public here that says that, and, and I've seen evidence that that is true, that there was some type of registration process a many years ago. But there are no records. So it's, it's really at this point, I am, I'm going through public records. I'm listening to the citizens, council members, and others telling me where they're at. So over time, we're going to find how many are really out there. And along with my long-term research, short-term rental research, all of that is slowly coming together. I have a much better picture today than I did at your last meeting. Clarified a lot. Now that registration is happening on the short-term rentals, clarifying a lot. So again, this is a tenure or more problem that we're trying to fix in a fairly short time period. So we, we, please allow that time to go by so we do this correctly and figure it out. As you heard me speak before, there, there is an ordinance in place. Just starting to that enforcement and those letters are going out and those contacts are being made. I have talked to a number of them personally. I have email, by email, and, and now I'm sending out letters. So again, that process is starting and we will see, you know, how that plays out. The member of the public talked about being gentle and, and I agree with that concept. This is not the time to become, come in heavy-handed. This is a matter of, there's a, there's a policy and there's a, first of all, there's an ordinance that is very clear. There's a policy coming from this board of what they, over the last number of meetings, of what their concerns are, of, of non-family housing, short-term rentals. And we definitely heard from the public on their concerns. So all of that I have taken in and, and I am going to enforce under those, again, those policies coming from you. The, the most egregious are going to be taken care of first. And, and then we will slowly work, making sure by the end of the year and hopefully before, but again, there's a lot of other work going on at the same time, that, that we have a really good handle on this and we will have a high level of confidence on, on where we're at with not only non-family, but the rest of the rentals.
Under the non-family housing heading on this handout, and you had, we had just talked about this, the fourteen non-family rentals, are you talking about like fourteen individual, like detached buildings or some of those apartments?
These are all individual buildings.
Okay.
They range from houses in the R, R two district. They are all, I driven by all of them. They are what I would consider single-family houses.
Okay.
Originally built, originally built for single families. And the, there's some motels that have been turned into the non-family housing. Those are pretty much the two that I see out there today.
So when you say a motel, are you talking about like, or a motel-style building? Are you talking, does that fourteen include six units?
No, it's the one building. Right now, I'm, yeah.
Sorry, that's, I just wasn't a hundred percent sure.
I think that was my question.
You know, I've asked, I think in email, do you have like specific addresses that we could look at because we could cross-reference with our, our local community?
I can, I can, I'll, I'll send that to your manager tomorrow and he can share that with you. Absolutely.
Jonathan, I, I have a question. Did you, did you do, or where did this Article four supplementary regulations come from? Is that you?
That's, that, that came from me. That is your ordinance language today.
So I, I, so something is clearly omitted that I didn't, and this is part of my question, is the very last sentence. It looks like there's a section thirty-eight, three sixty-three that talks about registration, certification, and inspection for rental units. And all it says, all rental dwellings in the city must be.
And then. And, and so that is for all, all your rentals and it's, and it's long, so I'm not sure of the.
So, so the question, so the question I have is a person that is, has a house as a non-family rental dwelling is by the ordinance supposed to register somehow.
Right.
And that has or hasn't been done. It sounded like Mrs. Doofnoy indicated at one time in the past it was done, but doesn't sound like that's been done for a while.
I don't think.
And maybe it's a one, maybe it was a one-time registration, maybe it was a yearly reg, who knows what it was, but I, I, that's what I'm trying to figure out what kind of registration is required. There's got to be something that in section thirty-three sixty-three, I would think the talks like is it, the registration is a one-time thing or is it annually?
It's annually.
Okay, but that is incumbent then upon the city to have sent
Right.
the, the owner of the employee housing, a bill that says you need to register your place and you have to comply by these rules. I, I guess one, a couple of things that, and I, obviously I don't think, well, I will say obviously in case I might insult somebody. I'm not sold that we're not, that we're ready to do this tonight. I don't know if the rest of the council is. But a few of the things that I felt that are really valuable that came out of the hearing is I think the point is we, you know, you look here, there's very good regulations in place in regards to appearance and upkeep. You know, the talk about the trash, the lawns, you know, your windows, your porches, what is expected? And we have to, we have to make sure that we're enforcing. It, it doesn't do any good to have it on the piece of paper if it's not being enforced. And that's why I think, I, I think it's somewhat important that we have a time for our current ordinances to be enforced before we completely throw everything out and say, let's do something different. I think enforcement of our existing regulations is important. It sounds like you're on the path to that. Another thing that I think is very critical is that it is a true statement from my view again, that businesses need employee housing. The question is, the two parts that I think that are the butt onto that just a little bit is, is number one, how much do, there are some talks in here about how much it should be within residential areas. And, and there's the discussion here about there's three hundred foot sentence, there's a nine hundred foot sentence. There's, there's different things in there that I think are meant so that a whole block doesn't just become employee housing. That's not what I think this ordinance was intended for. And, but I think there's an idea that we have some businesses that are going to go under if they don't have employee housing. I mean, that's, that's the, and it's not, somebody also said it's not going to get solved overnight and it's not. However, the part that we think, or that at least a member of the, members of the council really talked about is that the living conditions within these non-family, single-unit dwellings have. To be met as is listed here. If you've got way too many people in, that's not what is intended. But if the landlords or the owners or whoever owns the property is doing their job in the ordinance, that's not the problem. The problem is if if the ordinance isn't being followed and working with them to try and make that, I think is on the right path. Do we, do we want down the road to say how many of these we allow or not allow? I'm not a hundred percent sure. I think the first is we we need to walk into it and figure out how about enforcing what we have. And and moving from there, but businesses need it. And at the same time, people that are resident residents in an area. Need to need to feel that it's that they're not losing the idea of a small town neighborhood. That's it.
I I agree with like almost everything you said. I think we don't have enough information. Um these hearings were started because a lot of ci- citizens believe employee housing, short term rentals is what's causing our housing crisis. Cheryl, you're right, laughing, housing is causing our housing crisis. Um but I think we and the rest of us felt we needed, we owed it to the citizens to look at our numbers, to look at, you know, what rules are not being followed. But without proper numbers and Jonathan, I'm gonna tell you, I doubt these numbers just a pinch. Um and when I I'm not sure about your numbers, just a pinch, but.
But what?
I I.
But there's more.
I think.
Yeah, they're they're low.
They're low.
Yeah, absolutely.
But I think without the proper numbers, we can't really make any decisions without enforcement. We can't make any decisions. Um I wish he had stayed because it is vital that people call. We have a noise ordinance, we have curfews. If we, if people aren't calling in when they have a problem with any neighbors, nobody can fix it. Um I I. I don't, you know, we want neighborhoods to be neighborhoods. I think the the spacing out of them is important just so that there's not a whole block. But our businesses rely on these employees. Um I'll tell you from running the whole chest that um these are an active part of our community. And I know the difference between my till in the winter and my till in the summer. And a lot of that is due to the seasonal employees. Um, do you get one or two people that you might have an issue with? Yes, but you get one or two locals you have an issue with. On the whole part, we do become friendly with them. We get, you know, we do have relationships with them. So I think without enforcement and without just telling people, you know, it's two AM, you just got off work and you're all hyper, but you might be being a little loud. Let's try some respect in that area first. Um but like I said, without accurate numbers, you know, and at some point, do do we have to look at how many are residential? Maybe, you know, I I'm like Don, I just don't know. But I wanna be very cautious because these are a vital part of the workforce here. And to be honest, the workforce on the island, even though, you know, I I wanna make sure my local businesses have them first. Um but, you know, the people that go to the island, they come to Sydney this, so it's kind of a big circle. But I think I'm just with Don, we need to be cautious. We do not, I don't think we make any decision until we have accurate numbers. And we follow through with enforcement and please people, you know, once your number's out there, maybe we can get people to call you. And fix a couple of these issues, but um and again, to me, the really big thing is, you know, making sure we don't have. One neighborhood that gets twenty of them.
I think.
But we have rules, we're just not enforcing them.
And for me, I I echo a lot of what Connie just said. Um if I see you with a spoon doing dope, I'm I'm calling the cops on you. I don't know if I I'm not sure what, you know, how to even take that one. And, you know, I I like I said earlier, I I started as a seasonal employee. I might not be from a different country or whatnot, but um I I benefited from that. And I can understand how important it is for a section of our community. To have housing for our workforce. And a lot of the Jamaicans that come over here and whatnot, they're the backbone of the community. And they work circles around me, I already know that off the top. They so I I I don't wanna penalize that workforce, but I also know that. We went, I don't know, over a decade or so without enforcement. And there are some companies maybe who don't care. Or they 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 neglected pay attention to their their uh property. And then there's other companies like Mrs. Doofenaw that I've been by your place on several occasions. Then there's never probably any any uh issues over there. It 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 looks aesthetically pleasing and I don't think that uh the neighbors. Are alarmed or anything, so I don't wanna penalize that, but I do know that. The address is, maybe the address would be our biggest start because. Us as a council, we kind of know our own community and I'm pretty sure that we could assist and. Well, you know, right off the top of letting you know, you forgot this, this, this and this, cuz um, you know.
If I may interrupt, I didn't forget. I'm doing my best with the records that I have.
But we know that, I mean, it's just like I said, this is low. Um and again, I wanna protect the neighborhoods, but I think during covert, we all learned it's pretty hard to function without these seasonal people.
Um, I just wanna comment, maybe everybody else understood this is supposed to be that way, but the supplement force cut off. So um and I looked through my packet to make sure that wasn't on the back of something. So maybe it was supposed to be like that, but clearly I weren't, I can't vote on slang that's like cut off like that. Um two, I do wanna just make the comment personally, cannot speak to the council, that everybody's comments on this, whether they were for or against. Or sort of for or sort of against, I believe that everybody who came in here did make an honest um statement of their personal experiences. Um. Negative and positive um and but I I do agree with Connie that if you see something, say something. Um, I get it, it can be intimidating um when your neighbor, like, I don't wanna pick fights with my neighbors, my neighbors don't pick fights with me. I know that I leave a lot to be desired as a neighbor. Um, you know, so but they, I'm sure they have like, like when I see this two additional first letters, I'm like, hmm, I wonder if I'm getting one of those like um. And there's been times where where people, not necessarily my neighbors right now, but I've had neighbors that like bug me. And you know, whether you know them or you don't know them, it can be, it can be intimidating to go up to somebody. But I I do think that um generally people are responsive to a polite, hey, do you mind? Um and if that person isn't responsive, then you certainly don't feel bad about, you know, going higher up or to somebody else for assistance. Um, but I think there were some really great points made here today. I think we're all eager for a resolution, um but like we do need to. Because this is gonna be really hard to redo. Obviously, we we're aware that every ordinance, no matter how carefully you enforce it, there's gonna be kind of a learning period, but we, you know, we. And I wanted to get this done in time for June first, but it's gotta be as as close as we can get to write um before we. That's just my opinion before we do anything on it.
It's um oh, three notices. Regulation rule that be accepted, correct? Three notices and or three violations. And you would lose the license for that. Is does that need to be in here or is that somewhere else?
I I'm not sure.
The three violations and you lose the permit that you have.
For Airbnbs, I'm not sure if it rides over to this.
So yeah.
That's an Airbnb's, I know, but I'm not.
You gotta be careful not to call them Airbnb's when you come for some rentals.
Sure, sure.
Well, I mean, in in this is just uh your added uh supplementary regulation. I'm hoping to clarify certain conditions that are expectations, correct?
Right, because we have been, we have um the discussion, uh especially from the community. Has been what are those regulations? You know, what will be enforced, which is why I put that in, it wasn't supposed to be an all encompassing um. Not you mentioned, uh it it again, it was literally copying and pasting your ordinance on the non family section. Um registration process is something different. I didn't realize that was part of this discussion. Um otherwise I would have put that in, but that would have added three or four more pages. Um there wasn't again, because the four pages, it was, I didn't realize it was part of this discussion.
You know, I didn't, I think I'm I'm a little, I guess I'm a little miffed at myself because I know this is gonna take time. It's not, it's not necessarily your fault, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't have uh. I wouldn't have pushed through the short term rental part of this at this time because it seems that we rushed on one and now we're gonna take our time with other. And you're not being fair to both sections of our community. I, that's just, that's the way it looks to me if somebody, somebody's gonna feel like, oh, you you hurried up on one and now you're him and an all. And both of them were put in front of us with. With not tangible numbers, it just, and so I I don't wanna ever make that type of mistake again. Because I'm gonna have to hear it, you know, and maybe others up here were satisfied with rushing the short term rental. Because they mentioned it every council meeting, but that's not fair and just because we're not operating in the same. The same pace on this one, so it seemed biased.
I think I think they're two different entity, myself. And as 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 Jonathan said, I think we had registered twenty eight for twenty five or for twenty four, twenty five. But he said there was probably forty out there that weren't registered. So that's okay, I guess, I I don't think we should reward people that aren't following the rules.
The re- the registered, now that registration is happening.
Is open now for the new.
The numbers are actually coming in pretty close to um what my spreadsheet showed. So I'm feeling pretty confident on on those numbers that I gave you for that. Um and that was uh again, a little easier because we had at least partial records on on the short term rentals that were. Um, one and two years old.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna be um too invasive, but I need to see the actual addresses. Because I drive this neighborhood every day. And if you're not asking for at least additional support from the community to help you access some of these numbers, I don't.
And and what we did, Mike, on the last, I mean, I I think the only, if you refer back to the minutes of the last meeting. The only action the council took was to put a cap. That that is what, that is the action.
Yeah, aim class two.
Uh. Right, a cap of twenty five under category two, that's what we did. I mean, it wasn't, there isn't like um. And I don't, I would, I don't know, I'm not sure what other thing where where, you know, the question is, do we wanna cap? These, do we wanna not have?
No.
We got, but we know that the that the short term rental discussion. Was this sort of, this was sort of an add on to the short term rental discussion. That of the of the priorities listed, that was seen as a as a as a major priority. This this was listed.
I disagree, I thought it was a simultaneous.
I believe, I believe when we were talking about short term rentals. Couple of the council members said, well, if we're gonna talk about short term rentals, we need to talk about.
Because one residential or non. Section affects the other.
Well. Well, I know, and I think you would wonder when that made that said we should talk about both. Yeah, and 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 I know that my thinking was that it doesn't make sense to somehow only look at the one without the other. Because if all we've done is put a kibosh on short term rentals and at the same time haven't reviewed how that may affect. Property being sold, just so it becomes employee housing, then we've lost track of it.
Right.
So but but we've taken, we're we're moving along with this, we're still getting information on this. And I mean, I think we're moving in the right direction.
I do too, because one of the things that we took out of there was, and I think it's class one, where if you were renting a a a room in your house and you're living in your house. We're not control, we're not limiting that anymore, correct? So that took the numbers differently, plus you can do it downtown or in the business area. So that's a different number, so this is just just a individual standalone house and residential. And and I do agree that that seemed to go faster than this, but I think these numbers are confusing. But I, you know, I I I hope we always leave the option open for Councilman um Wilford's um. Concern that if it turns out that these numbers are way different, that we talk about it again.
Yeah, I agree.
Or we should just say, okay, we're done with that and move on, cuz he has concerns and we should always make sure that we address those. But again, we did open up other avenues where, like you said, it's not regulated if it just, if you're renting out a room in your house. That used to be in that number, so we didn't really affect the number by a lot.
And I actually think the other thing that I learned in the process and other people know. And I'm by no means any expert on zoning.
We're still learning a lot.
Um but I, when I heard about residential. I thought there were, but according to at least this data, there are no non family dwellings. That are the employee housing that are currently located in any R one. Those are, the ones that are listed are in R two according to the data that we got presented here. So that isn't necessarily correct, is what you're saying.
Very lame, which is it?
Very lame is probably business, I'm guessing.
There's some parts that.
Because that was the original business.
Oh, that might be.
Very both were down there.
Serious business, okay.
I don't think that's so R one.
Well, it's a good discussion.
Portage is considered, you said R two, correct, on portage?
Portage is R two.
R two.
Uh if if I may ask one question of the uh council. So I wanna be clear in all of the uh talks, all of the meetings I've attended. Um there has never been an implication of getting rid of non family housing. It has been about the R two district.
Yes.
It is about, um in fact, we we wanna encourage some of the conversation we had, we would love to encourage it. In the R three district closer to the airport. So I wanna uh al- lay the fears of um of what we've heard tonight and and others. That this is not about getting rid of non family housing. This is um about neighborhoods. Again, I'm repeating what, I'm not the policymaker here. I wanna make sure I understand your policy so that when I am out talking to uh. Businesses and and owners and people who want to have non family housing in our city. That um I can honestly um. Confer what I believe your policy is, and that is um we would love to see uh non family housing. Um this gentleman here talked about two big projects in Mack Mackinac Island. We would love that here and I mean, again, I'm, if I'm saying anything that you disagree with, I I want.
No, and I think, I think and and I I if I didn't say it right, this is just me. I had a sentence here that I tried to put over with my understanding and I think businesses, many of our businesses. Need employee housing. The two, the concerns are residential areas and the enforcement of the existing regulations. So that people aren't jammed in that, that's that's me. I can't say what anyone else thinks, but that's. I, you know, there are some people that say, no, businesses don't need employee housing, but I think they're not right, but that's my opinion.
And I haven't heard that in the meetings I've attended. Um it seems to me that there's a consensus.
And I think some of the concern come from uh ordinance draft that we got in front of us about what. Mackinac Island was considering when it came to employee housing.
Their master plan.
Say we were, I I think, and it was just draft.
Something in their master plan.
It's in their master plan, okay, so it is in their master plan. They said, we encourage you to find employee housing in St. Ignace and Mac Cities.
Yeah, I think that there was concern.
I think it says mainland.
They're doing this in the business or doing this in the town, so that wasn't.
No, this, the only concern with this was residential.
Yeah.
Residential two.
Residential two, cuz they're not allowed in R one, but we'd like them to go to R three. That's.
I I don't think that this article four supplemental addresses the motels that are being converted.
Correct, that is not, has not been in our discussion.
It's all been residential.
Yep.
And I don't think.
But there have been residential use, but if they do a change.
Right.
In residence.
That is gonna be part of my enforcement actions.
Business.
That's gonna be.
Part of the discussion.
For the last, I think you told me about this, the. For the last, I think you told me about this, the last one who actually came in and got a change of use was Mr. Cawthorn.
I, I believe he did, yes. But yeah, they need to get a change of use when they switch from a motel, because motels have, you know, thirty-day.
Different, different.
Different rules, so they need to have a change of venue or usage, so.
The zoning that they're located in probably.
For the most part, I think they're, it's illegal use.
Yeah.
But, you know, at a minimum, the city needs to know that.
That it's not a motel, that it's a housing.
And so you have uses allowed, you have special uses. And, and it every time in zoning, every time there's a change of use. That's a fairly major thing in the zoning world. And they just have to mostly, um, apply, show that, that that use is allowed. And that the physical building and site plan works for that use if there's a, additional use. So, um, and, and that is all we'll be asking of, um, any motel, um.
I'm gonna make a motion that we postpone any kind of decision-making at the, to the time being until we let. Um, Jonathan give us some more accurate numbers and he has time to do, um, more homework and more enforcement.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second to postpone any discussion on.
Well, I would like to at least thank you for it. I know, I know you've got a lot of work ahead of you, so I don't, I don't want you to think.
We didn't give you enough time.
Appreciate it. I just wanted to make sure you weren't.
No, 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 we weren't picking on you. You, you've done well in the, the limited time you've been here, but I know we've been giving you a lot.
Well, it's, and it's new to us, cause we haven't been enforcing this for forever, so.
You know, this, this part of time is, is the research part. And we're, we, we went a major milestone with the short-term rental. With, uh, the online registration starting last week. And, um, the rest of this is going to fall in place, um, in, in, in a timely manner, but it, again, takes time. Ten, ten years of non-enforcement, um, very poor records. To get where we need to be. We, we wanna be as, and I've heard numerous times, like, we wanna be as accurate as possible. I, as an administrator, wanna be as accurate as possible with the records that I have. Um, with the best light on the cities. This, this is a big deal. This, um, what we're charging in order to do this is, is a big deal to many of, um, the owners. And so we wanna do it right. We don't wanna, we should be charging what we do. And, and come in with a heavy hand and then create even more problems than what has been.
Thanks, Jonathan. Do you have a motion in a second to postpone? Discussion on, uh, non-family dwellings, so we get more information from Jonathan and some more accurate numbers. Is there any more discussion? Please take your role.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilford?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayola Moin?
Yes.
Councilmember Litzner?
Yes.
Councilmember Teltor?
Yes.
Next up.
Um, Jonathan, I just had a question. Um, tortile mentions fifty.
Again, I'll look at, that Chris and I are looking into that, so we'll figure out how. Where, where, first find it and then we'll, I, I don't get to see the same, um, view that you're seeing. But I'll, if, I have a meeting with Deckard tomorrow and I'll talk to them about that.
Okay, next up, ordinance update, parking resolution twenty-five dash nineteen.
Okay, based on city council's concerns with potential parking, uh, problems. Uh, the city council formed a parking committee to do some research. Um, the committee, uh, presented their recommendations to the DDA. Um, this recommended zoning ordinance change, um, was approved by the DEC DDA. Um, and, uh, some of the changes are, um, changing the hours. Of enforcement from, uh, seven AM to seven PM, changing that to eight AM to eight PM. Again, it would be seven days a week, uh, not eliminating Sunday. Um, the parking bureau would be changing the municipal violations bureau, which is just the simply the clerks where they'd be making their payment. It'd be eliminating any language for coin meter information. Um, it would be changing the fee structure. Um, uh, the actual fees written in the ordinance to, um, language, uh, stating that. Referring them to the, the fee structure, which are the fee schedule that is approved annually by city council. And the permits will be year-round permits. And the parking meter authority would be moved, uh, from the city engineer's office. Uh, to the city manager's office. Again, this is, this was, um, recommended, uh, through the DDA. And Ryan is here, if you have any questions.
DDA worked with the council parking committee also.
Right.
That's right. Came up with all this.
Yeah, and the old ordinance is in the packets, uh, with the red line, um. And the, the new ordinance with the recommended changes was in the packet as well.
So is the time to start, I mean, I know, and from my view, it wasn't us during the public hearings, time to start, like. Stuff that you see in the ordinance that you don't understand or think there's stuff missing, is that now?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I would say, I'm assuming that in section thirty-two eighty-two. Second line down, that it would say, I must, from what I'm hearing. It would say unattended for a period of longer than.
Oh.
I think it's supposed to be free, if I'm noticing right.
Look at that.
Okay. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, the, um. I understood that got explained. There's another one here that doesn't make sense to me. On second page, section thirty-two eighty-six use. When I read it out loud here, um. The second, end of the second line into the third line, section thirty-two eighty-six A. The owner or operator of said vehicle shall park within the area designated by the and.
Oh.
I don't know what that's supposed to be. It doesn't make sense. Okay, to me, I'm missing something.
They added an and in there.
Um. What, uh, like, what, what, um. I guess, this is just a question here, section thirty-two one twelve. Um. About signage, appropriate signs erected at the city limits. Is that not required in our current, or is this something new that you have to have some kind of signage?
I think this is directing people to the parking.
I think this is just. This was the original ordinance too, right?
They showed across.
It talks about this will provide notice to the public and shall set forth the restrictions and effective date. So I'm assuming it meant something like. Parking not allowed or whatever. I, is this something different than what currently exists?
This is the original.
That comes right out of existing, that park did not get changed.
So does signage need to change?
But it probably should be, could be eliminated.
So, so that's your original ordinance that.
We could, we could get rid of it or, or alter it, I guess.
Right, well, you, do you follow what I'm saying? I didn't understand what it means, that.
I don't think.
What does this?
It says appropriate signs will be, correct? It doesn't say they are. It says will be.
I, I didn't understand what it meant, okay?
That's approved.
And I didn't know if it meant that, you know, that parking's not allowed. I mean, how, how big a sign do you need? And what do you need on the sign? It didn't, it's a question mark. It didn't make sense.
I don't know if you need to have specific locations. I think just appropriate signs will be posted to notify. To notify the public of appropriate.
So, so state, state law requires a certain amount of signage. And that's really just tying that in, instead of going back to state law and having a, a re, rehuritating straight state.
Correct, and so my point is, before you endorse, before you prove this, you'd need to know what signage you have, or it's not. According to state law, otherwise it's not valid, right?
Are you saying we need to know the specific types of sign?
No, I'm saying that, well, before you ever would en- enforce anything, it sounds like you have to have.
The signage.
By state law, some kind of signage. That has to, does it exist currently? Does it not exist currently? What does it need to say? That's.
Or would it just say that adhering to state laws?
Yeah, I can trim it down to, all signs will comply with state law or something.
All, all signs must comply with state law.
Right, man.
And then.
And is there a reason it has to be in three different spots? But I guess it's wherever you must be able to.
Actually, maybe I was sure.
Because it's got one along US two, one on North State out here, and then you could enter the city on portage. Those are your two. Right. Well, I guess you could also enter the city off of the ramp on portage.
Yeah.
I mean, that's another area that you can enter the city. If, if the concept is, when you enter the city, you need to know this. There's.
It's not being done.
There's a couple different, there's a couple different spots anyhow.
It's not being done, no, right.
Is that, is that then function as?
I go back to my point.
The law.
It, it's public now, so the state is concerned, and we all should be concerned. When we, um, write a law, write an ordinance, that the, the public is, you know, has notification. And so when, it, it, when people come into your town, and we see this all the time, especially at winter. Um, winter parking is, you know, comes up, comes out in November or whatever, October, you will see a sign coming into Petoskey, maybe.
Yeah.
Um, and that's all it is, is so that the public.
What does it say on the sign? Something about?
No parking on any street between three AM and.
Right.
Okay, got it.
Seven AM. Or parking, um, parking regulations apply in.
Gotcha.
City of St. Ignis. You don't have to get into detail.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Individual signs on each street or each parking lot, that would be also sufficient.
And I was gonna say, I don't know that this, they wear, just tell me to say appropriate signage will be erected according to state laws.
This, this is something that, you know, again, legal, I'm, you'd have to ask the lawyer. But on, on the top of that page, when someone has been parked and gets a ticket. In violation of the provisions, does it matter that it says each police officer? Is, is it necessarily going to be a police officer? Is that, or is that not relevant?
It's not a meter made?
Well, we heard that we didn't like that, but it just says, the police officer attaches to the vehicle a notice. That, I mean, to me, my guess is, it may not be a police officer.
Parking.
Parking enforcement officer.
Now or something.
I mean, or whatever, I don't know. That's my question mark. I have another question mark there. Um.
Do they even, I mean, some places you just get a surprise in the mail, don't you? You don't even.
You do. In college towns, you just get a surprise in the mail. The other thing, besides the ordinance and the video, I, I respect completely. The parking committees, meetings, and their discussions. And I think we have, you know, the question is, we were prompted to try and do something. I get it. And, and I think, I personally think the concept about a lot at Little Bear East Arena might be. That, that, I should say, whatever you're calling it in here, Little Bear. South, Little Bear South Lot, right? That's what, that's what it says here. Um. I, I think that makes sense, because it's a big parking area. I, I'm not convinced that on the main street. That you couldn't just have three-hour parking. And that.
Two-hour now.
Or whatever, two-hour parking and write tickets. I, I would buy that we have. To up the cost, so that it would be, because you can't get like a ten, a ten-dollar fine for parking there. For five days, I, you know, that's a better deal to get a ten-dollar fine than it is to pay your, your parking fee. I, I get that. But I'm wondering, as opposed to the discussion that occurred here about elderly folks. Coming downtown, whether they need an app or a non-app. The non-tech people needing an app or a non-app. I, I, and the cost of the app, I, I don't wanna see us go backwards. I understand that we've been put behind the eight ball. Um, by what's happening to some circumstances that are out of our control. Um, with what's happening with the charges for parking. We're not in charge of that. We, I mean, that's what. The ferryboat company is allowed to do. That's not in our control. But somehow using lots in a certain way, because no matter what we do here. We haven't, we're not gonna solve everything. We know that ahead of time, that if somebody's decided, they just wanna go a block up and park on the. On the side street, what are we gonna do? We just don't want them in certain spots. And, and I just, I, I sat on the council when we got rid of the parking meters. And I thought it was the best move we made, so. Uh, I'm, and I'm not saying we're bringing parking meters back. But I'm not sold that putting an app in is, is completely, at least on the downtown. I, I just buy that somehow, some limit on parking, even if it's two-hour parking as it currently exists. Might work and that we, we don't, we don't jump too far. I, I think the lot idea is a good idea. I, with, I'm there. I'm not, I'm just not, and I understand the DDA board met. And this is what they think is, is the best means to solve it. I, I get that, I'm just.
Now, the cities, that we are bringing, cause thirty-two eighty-four says the parking meter shall be installed. Like that whole thing, if we're, if we are going to zones or not, or whatever, that needs to be deleted. We're not bringing back park, parking.
I know, that's in there.
We should not have, shall be installed. And I can see where that was confusing to some people who read this.
I.
Saying we just wanna go zones, whether you agree with zones or not, I think that it, yeah, we need to delete that section. Or put in, if we choose to go to parking meters, then they shall be. But right now, it is, whether or not you want the zones or the paying or not, it's too confusing with thirty-two eighty-four, because that's ordering us.
And if you look at thirty-two eighty-six on page two, the, um.
Next to a parking.
One, two, three, four, fifth line down says, and upon entering, shall immediately deposit in said parking meter.
Yeah.
And, and we've said, so what we're saying isn't necessarily, and, and I know that we're trying to do this fast. Cause the fur season's upon us.
Yeah, but we can't have, we can't have ordinance, it don't make sense. Right, we, we, this a lot was discussed, I'm kinda surprised it's still in here. Um, one, but we, we have parking issues other than downtown, so we have a lot of parking issues behind downtown. Um, we have some, some very old, um, fee schedules for that parking.
I, and I.
Parking issues over here by the boat launch, so downtown.
And this ordinance would.
But every place.
Change regardless of whatever direction council goes in.
Right, the ordinance.
Right, but there's a lot of things that aren't.
Well, the way this ordinance is now, a lot of changes, so.
Thought we had gone through that, but.
We won't, uh, we won't do anything with that then. I don't know if we wanna postpone it or. Bring it back with all the changes that have been recommended and need to be changed.
And, and I'm not, and I'm not trying to like stall us from moving forward, but this ordinance.
But still, you gotta have, you gotta.
You gotta have, you gotta have the accompanying documentation to match it, or otherwise, I mean. I, I can't, I can't vote yes on this, so.
Well, that's, I think we'll just.
I have a couple other typos, you know.
You know, the whole thing's probably gonna have to be.
Yeah, we're gonna have to let, let him or Ryan know, and we'll get it. We just, we won't make any, take any action on this tonight then. I don't think we have to postpone it. We'll just reschedule, reschedule. With the changes, and if any, if anybody has, you know, after reading through it again. Fine-tooth comb after these changes, or after these typos and that.
I did have a question, the parking committee could answer this potentially. What is, what is the concept? Will there be signage or whatever? Because there would be a real, um, what's the word? Attractiveness to parking in the Little Bear East North parking lot. Will there be signs, it's no parking allowed here?
Suggestion was that we would do something similar for that, because we can block it off. You know, just in case we needed it for whatever overflow, but there's no signage.
Well, and the, the only thing that was listed on the recommendation, the three pages that Ryan talked about. It, it was silent. It says Little Bear South Lot, but there was nothing discussed. And, and that actually is the lot that is probably, they're, they're both about the same. Distance away from the ferryboat lots, but from the ferryboats, but. It's, it's, that's even been more maintained over time, cause the other was a skate park, basketball, you know, whatever. Has been there. I, and I get that. I, and I get that we've, we've got to figure out what to do. I also had a question, what the committee meant by the last line under permits. I, I, I get the employee parking about St. Anthony's Rock and all that. I think that actually makes sense. What does it mean here where it says apartment resident parking, a hundred dollar annual fee?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, Ryan, or do you want to take it?
That is for our residents here in town, if they're parked their vehicles in like, I think we have apartments here and some of them are parking in the parking lot back here, but then other vehicle parks back.
On city property.
Cause there's no parking that the apartment, some of them, some of them have parking, but some of them don't.
So I read this completely wrong. I thought somehow we were somehow trying to apply an annual fee to every apartment in the city of Saint Anthony's. It didn't make any, it didn't make any sense to me what what that had to do with this, but you've got some apartments in the downtown area that probably don't have parking to go with them.
Yep, so they're.
I got it, but, but that would have to be, you know, sort of clarified what's meant by that because but I, that's why it says would need to show proof of residency. I get it now. You've got the box.
Okay, so it's Jeremy on there?
Yes.
Well.
Is he, is that him up in the corner?
I think it's him in the booth.
Jeremy, can you hear me?
I can, go ahead.
Uh, on this ordinance update of parking, can we, uh, we don't have to make a motion to postpone, we just, that we're not going to do anything and reschedule it?
Cause we got. Yeah, I don't have, I don't have any problem with that at all.
Okay. Thank you. And the next opposite man, the parking.
Are, are we gonna do?
Can I ask you a question? Fix this. Is it Jonathan or Jeremy? Who invites us or?
We, we worked, we've been working together on it. And with, with that said, I want to apologize for the meter part. I, I'll apologize to Ryan also. I never understood the, the app portion of it. I'm sure I was told numerous times, but I have never seen that just, I mean, I was thinking more of um, a, a, I've seen meters for that. And, and that's what I thought. So that is my fault and that will be very easily cleared.
It's just like signage with QR codes.
Yeah, the system doesn't allow.
I don't know that I've ever seen that, or at least I haven't paid attention in front of attorney legally.
Okay, next, next up is the amended permit parking fee, but it's not a resolution, right Andrea?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Commit party. The amended permit parking is not a resolution though, right?
Oh, no, no, this was just a fee schedule change.
Just a fee schedule change. Maybe I'm.
Yeah, Ryan is here.
So if you want to say since the ordinance, you cannot go through tonight, there will be a change to this because this was taken into account that it was going to be yearly paid parking for the permits, which is listed there. The current ordinance states June through September is allowed for permit parking. Currently, we don't follow that. We charge the one-time seasonal fee. So I don't counsel wanted to.
Well, why don't we put them both together then?
Would it be okay if Ryan just gives a summary so that way there's, if you have any more questions, he can have it ready for the next meeting?
Yeah, so the recommendation from this was to go to a monthly May, September twenty-five dollar a month fee for employee parking in the permitted areas. Five dollars a month from October to April, or inherently charged of a hundred dollars for employee parking. Uh, the upper lot of St. Anthony's Rock would be employee only parking, and that's why the seven days. But I can see that maybe we charge these issues that are planned to take place up there. There's a general parking as well in Truckee Lot, uh, the Pedro Hill South Lots. Just looking at the cost right now is twenty-five for that season. If you look at the monthly rate of twenty-five, market is thirty dollars a month. The Sioux's twenty-nine a month, the Ghanis a hundred dollars a month, and Petoskey ranges from thirty to a hundred and twenty dollars a month. So this is just kind of getting us on par to where other communities are at for employee permit parking.
When you're talking about employee parking, are you referring to just employees of the downtown businesses? This is not, this is not a resident who may work on Mackinac Island?
These are for our downtown businesses.
The ones that are by St. Anthony's Rock.
St. Anthony's Rock, and then going to like Fort, Fort Tavon, Michigan May, Christie's, Sore, all those, well.
Well, behind like Bentley's and the old Winkmans and all that, they were all workers going to the island because they're charged to park on the dock now, so they're parking there.
I was wondering why there were so many cars.
That's what they're doing. They're back and charging it. That's fall from the bank right to Truckee Street.
That makes sense.
And it's bound to get worse.
I couldn't believe that.
Well, yeah, because the people that are working on the island are, but they're all, that's what they're all, they're all the carpenters, the plumbers, the trucks, the carriage drivers.
Would that parking for the employee parking for like, say, the lower level St. Anthony's Rock, would that be only during certain hours? Like, would that be, like, for my parking, I work in Petoskey, so we have a lot that is employee only from, I don't know, eight to five, Monday through Friday, and then it's open, but the sign designates that. So would this be like only during traditional business hours? Would it be twenty-four seven all, all year? I mean, it would seem that, I realize there are people who work at night, but if, you know, depending on the businesses who are going to be using that space, like the bank isn't open, right?
Well, anybody parks back there, if you park back there as an employee, you gotta have a permit on your car.
Yeah, but I mean, like,
Just saying like after five?
Like eight to eight is, say, if we do the paid parking downtown, would this area be like eight to eight employee, like you'd have to have a permit or pay? Like after eight PM, would it be free whether or not you have a permit? I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out.
We, we, we didn't consider that. I don't know, Brian, if you discussed it.
We'll have a lot right now in St. Anthony's that is permit parking.
Anyway.
And then also it's for just three hour free parking for visitors. The upper lot currently is permit parking only Monday through Friday, Saturday and Sunday it's open to visitors.
Okay, because I mean, if we don't have some sort of a limit, if it's like, you can park here for three hours or you can park all day with a permit, if somebody's late for work, it could be full by eight oh five. Speaking from experience. So I would say like, if it's going to be an employee parking, it should be employee parking only, at least during certain times. And then it can be.
Like the bank, I think you're right, but then like a lot of our shops downtown, they stay open until eight or nine, so that might be difficult.
So then maybe like it would, so it would just be limited, and that's fine, but then it would just be, this lower lot would be always employ, employee parking only or summer employee parking only. Like there would be no, because I don't think you can have it, employee parking with a permit for, you know, plus open to the public if there's a spot available. It has to be employee parking or not employed, I think.
The low, the lower lots, it's only.
That was my question.
The bank has the most, they have the. So that lower lot isn't full. There's no way you could have, there's never full parking rooms. There's that. Preferred.
But I mean, the sign says permit parking only, is what I'm saying.
Upper lot, lower lot is that combination where there is a limited, it has a trade in spots.
Okay. And there, each spot is marked employee, no? Because I think you would have to mark off the spots so that, like, it doesn't fill up, like if you.
Not each spot is marked. The, the cars have a thing in.
Yeah, like if I've got, if there's a total of twelve employees who need to park there, but not each spot is designated, and then it says you can pay to park here for three hours or you can park as an employee. When you get there as an employee, there's not going to be a spot left. Is my point. So it has to, I think it either has to, we can either mark three spots as public parking or mark twelve spots as employee parking only, but I don't think you can have a mixed use lot and it's, you know, first come, first served because the people who are counting on that permit, you know, to use their permit should have some sort of priority, at least during business hours.
Permit parking can park in the upper lot too, right?
Yeah, the designated just is so that you can park down the lower or the upper. So if the, the lower lot filled up or designated, they could park in the general. And the upper level, they could park behind Bentley's, they could park behind City Hall here with our.
And there's enough designated spots for everybody? Okay.
Our general, we call it general.
You're not really looking at changing what you've currently got there. What this plan, at least my understanding is what this does just changes the fees.
Yeah, fees outside of the upper lot, it would be, we're right now it's Monday through Friday, it's employee only. This would be seven days a week.
It would be new behind like Bentley's and all that. Like now we don't, you don't have to have a permit or anything, but now with this new, you're gonna, and you gotta pay.
And you've got to be an employee of a downtown business, not just a Mackinac Island, right, correct? An employee of one of the St. Agnes's business.
Yes, St. Agnes's businesses, yeah.
Yeah.
And that, then you're gonna have an issue.
Really?
At least behind Bentley's and the old Winkmans, that's all.
Yeah, that'll be important. So that those, for those who, they won't be able to qualify for a permit if they were.
But they're gonna have to pay to park there though.
They didn't pay to park there, yeah. They wouldn't be able to qualify for a permit for that.
Right, but they gotta pay to park there.
Yep.
So, well, you guys, with these changes then, we'll just, uh, do this next meeting then. We don't have to, we don't have to postpone it or anything, according to Jeremy, so. And then, uh, same with the city digital paid parking. Next up, request public hearing, Peddler's Ordinance.
At the May ninth, twenty twenty-five, uh, St. Agnes Downtown Development Authority, uh, meeting, this, uh, DDA approved the recommended update to the ordinance. They were reviewing the current, uh, Peddler's Ordinance as well as the mobile food vending permit fees. Um, the recommended ordinance is, was in the council packet. Um, the, the motivation behind it was to eliminate mobile vending uh, during car show and truck show um, to not interfere with those, um, special events put on by the visitors bureau. And Ryan is here to kind of add on to that if you have anything, Ryan.
We included the proposed ordinance and then some of the edits. I mean, I talked to the gentleman, and currently the ordinance for just a central business district. We discussed, that was on the they mentioned central business, right, and it should be central.
And you're changing the fees too, right, or upping the fees?
This is a fee that would be included in the ordinance, that would be a fee schedule.
Okay, but I think that was also a talk.
So we, we had to table that one. We didn't have, Connie wanted to be there and she wasn't at that meeting, so we tabled the fee schedule for Peddlers until our next meeting.
Okay, so.
And we're calling for a public hearing, but before we call for a public hearing, I guess I'd ask, um, ask the DDA director a couple of questions. What, what is meant, I'm confused, on the special events with page four of the Peddler's Ordinance?
The new one.
Of the new one, yeah, um, it looks like subsection B one, three, III, where it's a special event. It's on towards the bottom of page four. The last sentence, I'm not sure I understand what that meant. Mobile vending as part of a special event is allowed year round. What's meant by that? A special.
Like car shows?
So, yeah, if you get a special event status, you're allowed to have, um, you're allowed to have food vendors and mobile vending.
Well, what does? Oh, I was gonna say is allowed year round. I didn't really get what.
Well, I think the, I think the, um, a peddler's license, when you get a vending thing, it's six months. If you get a permit from the city to then, like, say the guy got. Yeah, it's, it's a six month, like, application. This is during events, they're allowed all year round.
Okay.
But then it's, so I guess I don't understand, then you want to saying not all year, there are a lot all year round, but then it may not be permitted under the fiscal effect on the thing on the front, on the.
Like, well, well, it looks like three lines above. It says something about it's only good for the duration of the special event.
Right.
But then it says the mobile vending is allowed year round seems, seems to me to be a little.
During the year.
So like.
They could bring it to the car show, to the truck show.
Right, it would have been better worded at any event that has gotten a, a special event status, it's allowed during the year. So, but if I get a permit to then stay across the street, it's a six month thing. I think it's May.
So you're, this was in just May through October, I see what you're saying. So, but it's a special event in the winter.
And so we don't care if they have a special event in the winter or the summer, if they got, came to council, got their special event status, they can have a mobile vendor.
The other thing, and I remember the problem we had on the council many years ago now. Um, but it's under, it's sort of talked about under farmers markets and flea markets on the next page.
Mm-hmm.
The third line down says farmers markets and flea markets on private property are allowed um, in the CBD and or GBD when approved by the city manager's office. Um, so there are, that's the only spots they're allowed because we had a, like a residential one that was never ending up by the old hospital. You may remember they had like a, he had like a cot, the gentleman is no longer with us, but he had like a,
Yep.
He had a flea market there every day all when the weather turned nice.
Yep.
And there was, and that wasn't sort of what the residences, residences felt there should have been in that area, but that's not, that's not a problem here because that wouldn't be the only place that those are allowed on private property are the CBD and the GBD. A flea market? It wouldn't be allowed?
I don't think that's what it's saying. Hmm? I don't, I don't think you're gonna get, I don't think you're getting what you want done. So this is saying, obviously on public property, they have to have permission. But if it's downtown, even on private property, they have to get, I don't think this is addressing outside of downtown.
Okay, just, just, so it's not relevant.
Yeah, so I don't think you're getting the cover, you know.
I'm, I'm okay, I, yeah.
I don't think it's, it's answering what you'd like to, I, I.
I'm, I think, I think that this doesn't, what's the word I'm saying? It, the sentence there doesn't, um, impact what I, because I think.
No, it doesn't, it's a problem that you see.
And it was, it was.
That was probably the garage sale thing on the next page that might be addressed what you were talking about.
Yeah, or sale events per calendar year. We had to do something like that. And they, and then the garage sale could only go to three days at a time.
Yeah.
Four times a year because it can't go the whole summer. I mean.
Great, Harry. Yeah, so that's, that's.
Yes, so it's covered and it's covered there.
But then in the farmers.
Although it was much more looked like a flea market than a garage sale in my mind of what, what are the differences? Yes. Never, the rest of that looks good. So you need a motion to call for public hearing?
Well, just enough farmer's market event organ, that is responsible for assuming that vendors only market farm products products, handcraft and patchwork approved by the individual vendors. Vendors in an approved flea market are not required to obtain the city of St. Agnes Peddler's Ordinance?
A peddler and a flea market are different, I think.
None of those vendors and some, they don't have to pay, they're not paying anything.
I do not believe so. Am I right? Hmm, because it's an event held by.
Is that a, is that a, is that a?
So the, the farmer market is put on by the visitors.
Okay, so they need special event status.
Yeah.
They gotta, okay, all right.
I, I have a question on section twenty-two, three. Loud noises and speaking devices. Does this, um, make G-Man at events that he can't do his speeches over the?
Well, I, I'm not sure. I mean, I, I, the noise ordinance would go to inspect that.
But the peddler, not a, not an announcer. He's, I don't think he counts as a peddler when he does the.
Oh, I see.
Cause he's not selling. Don't shout, make any.
He wouldn't.
Mile, blow a horn, ring a bell, or use any sound device.
Box yelling, yeah.
I think that would be referring back to the noise ordinance.
Sure, so there's three.
No peddler nor any person.
In his behalf.
Oh, my God.
So that neither the peddler nor the, nor his advocate or her advocate.
Okay.
I, I don't think he'd be considered a peddler. That's because he's not selling.
Well, he's usually brought in by the.
He's just announcing, yes.
And then my other, um, comment is the numbers seem to jump all over the place. I can't, I'm not sure how we go from twenty-two, nine to twenty-two, thirty-one.
I noticed that.
It's probably where they took something out. Did you eliminate things, Ryan, or did it?
So normally that gets renumbered when it's in.
So normally that gets renumbered when it's in an ordinance form.
Just a draft.
Or, and, and in some respects, um, that is how some of your ordinances are and could be just right now. That they don't just, a, a lot of them, um, keep areas open for future. It's, it's very strange, but it could be confusing.
Well, all of them haven't been qualified, right, so.
I felt this was a lot, this was pretty clear and, and not very objectionable, I mean.
Do we just need a motion in a second to prove a public hearing for the June second?
I'm going to object to having it, I mean, we have these public hearing strikes before meetings, that we're talking about, like doing it before the next, or tomorrow.
We won't have three of them though.
Yeah, but I mean, they still take a long time, and this one is gonna be, based on the last time we dealt with this, there was a lot of feedback. I just think that we have to make use of one of the other nights of the week. Um, I mean, we only had, we had three tonight, but two of them took about ten minutes total. One of them took most of the time, I really think we should have it.
But the only thing, the only thing that really is different here is that we're taking care of the special event part, correct?
Correct.
That's the one change.
Okay.
If it's just one um public hearing, we can have it the same night. And I think so, we got like seven of.
I'll make a motion.
June ninth.
June. When do you want?
And at June sixteenth. Can't be the second, cause that won't be enough time.
Okay, June sixteenth.
Do I have a motion?
I'll second it.
Second? Any more discussion? This is to um, public hearing on Peddler's uh ordinance update. All of the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Post.
Post. Tried to Google last time.
Short term rental cap, commercial districts.
At the last city council meeting, city council discussed short term rental caps in the residential areas. And city council asked to revisit the uh short term rentals in the commercial districts.
What do you, that's, is this tourist business, central business?
Yeah, it would be the tourist business and the downtown, general and central.
Anyplace that's not residential, yeah.
The, you know, they have to house people too, to have them downtown. I don't think that.
We had a council member that requested that we bring it up, so.
This is short term, and it's not necessarily for housing, I don't, I don't know one way or the other, I'm just. This is short term rental, not, not in.
I was, I, I was the one who brought this up, I just felt like if our intent is to try to make more housing available for longer term use, that um those twenty nine, and it's probably more than that, cause that's only registered, um, does take away from long term use of housing for people. And we, we're looking at the caps for the other category one and category two, and so I just wanted to bring it up, that maybe we should be looking at a cap here.
In the past, when we looked at the short term rentals, there was an option or consideration of telling them they had to be reserved commercial, correct? Didn't happen, but there was discussion about that. Um, these are all commercial, owned already. There's a difference between the single family and the commercial. In my opinion.
Uh, yeah, I don't see the urgency in this district. To, I mean, I, I do understand at least addressing and like, I I can't make a, a, a good argument of why we should cap it.
I think it would, I would need like maybe a proposal, when everything's out, or like an essay, some information, I mean, I get where you're coming from, I do.
I do.
But I, yeah, it's like, I need, I feel like I need more opinions from, like, I need more debate.
Okay, well, we had requested the last meeting that talk about it, discuss it.
Any other?
Any other thoughts?
Again, Jonathan, do we know how many we have?
We've got twenty nine.
So one, one thing that's played out um since that report is uh, found out that we're close to the twenty, and the reason was, at some point uh, the city, when they were registering, were using the address of the management company as the short term rental uh instead of the actual address. So in other words, if you remember at that last meeting, I was very concerned because we had, and maybe I didn't say it here, it's uh definitely told your city manager, I was very concerned because I had um one address uh with ele- eleven uh in the, in the, in the district, and I'm thinking you know, first of all, the concern is you can't have more than three, and there was another one that had four or five and found out that they were actually management companies that um uh duplicated a bunch of residential. So the residential numbers really haven't changed, but nine have dropped off the commercial. So, so we're at about nineteen right now, um, there's a couple in there that um still uh, a, a little wishy washy about, but um, s- seven of them have registered as of today. Um, the rest, I'm confident that uh probably will. And those nineteen are in all commercial districts. They break down approximately four in the central business district. Um, and then the vast majority or at least um half are in the um DVD district, which is probably the appropriate place for them with all the hotels and, and things like that, I'm not sure. Um, I would recommend capping those, even if they're single family homes in that district. Um, uh, it, it seems like that would be an appropriate place for them. Then there's only a couple, if only one in the, no, two in the general business district. So, so you really have six in between general business and downtown. Um, the rest are in that DVD district, so that's, that's where we are at.
Thirteen.
I don't, I don't think we're gonna see a big change in.
I'm, I'm just gonna make a proposal or a motion that we don't cap this at this point. Uh, I, I understand where you're coming from, Joe, but um, if we have thirteen in tourist business district, isn't that where we just ask them to go?
Right.
Okay, so, I'm gonna say that we don't, I don't think nineteen is a, is a scary number, as long as Jonathan stays on top of it. But again, they're actually where we would like them to be, so I would hate to punish them and again stating that. You know.
I'll second Connie's motion.
Now, motion in a second, discussion? Please take the roll.
Councilmember Williford?
Yes.
Councilmember Iron?
Yes.
Mayor Prochem Gustafson?
Yes.
Mayor Wollong?
Yes.
Councilmember Lister?
Yes.
Councilmember Pelter?
Yes.
Member Shepherd?
Can pass a seven to nothing. Next up, city hall leases.
Uh, we have two uh city hall rental agreements that expired at the end of twenty twenty four. Um, the new proposed rental agreements um are in the council packets and have been uh um, we ran them by the, our city attorney. The, the previous rental agreements, uh, we, we charge a dollar twenty five per square foot. Um, and if, i- in the, there were some miscalculations in the previous agreement. Um, but it, but um home uh in the previous agreement for a dollar twenty five per square foot by two hundred and forty square feet, they were paying three hundred dollars a month. Again, there was an error on that last one, the, the, on the last contract, they should have been paying uh thirty six hundred dollars. Um, the proposed new contract would be two twenty five a square foot, uh, two hundred and forty square feet would be five hundred and forty dollars, an increase of two hundred and forty dollars, um, which would equal six thousand four hundred and eighty dollars uh, a year. Idemia is paying a dollar twenty five, or was paying a dollar twenty five as well for two hundred and twenty one square feet. Uh, for two hundred and seventy six dollars and twenty five cents a month, and they also paid additionally fifty dollars a month for internet. Um, and for a total of, of, for the contract, annual contract of three thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. Uh, the new contract would be two twenty five a square foot, um, which would be an increase of a hundred and seventy one dollars per month. Uh, for a total of five thousand nine hundred and sixty seven dollars, they no longer need internet. Um, again, this is uh renewing uh rental agreements at city hall that expired at the end of twenty twenty four. The only difference be- um, besides the, the, the fee is in the agreements, it actually spells out the dates that city hall is closed, so there's no confusion. Um, that they know when city hall is not open.
How does this compare with what is charged um the other renter on?
MB?
No, RS Scott.
RS Scott, um, I, I, I don't have that information in front of me, I'm assuming that it's all the same, but I, 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 I don't know, I don't know, Andrew, do you know?
So, I'm sorry, if city hall is closed, then they, they don't have their own key, they can't come in, like if it's closed, they have to be closed, okay? And they, I guess they obviously agree to that.
Yep, yep, and, and this is just uh um clarifying it so they know.
Okay, well, I'm gonna make a motion to accept, I think it's a reasonable rate. Is there a way you could amend that to make sure that RS Scott's paying the same or? Well, they're.
Or when their lease expires, you charge them whatever you charge.
Right, yeah.
Per square foot, however you do it.
I guess.
Obviously theirs must not be up.
I would, I mean, I would have made my motion to say that anybody we do a, a commercial lease to is treated equally.
That's right.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
Based upon square footage.
So I guess, okay, so I'd amend my motion to accept the new rate and that going forward, all leases that are approved are treated equally.
I'll second that.
No motion in a second, any discussion?
You mentioned the previous for home, and I think you said five thousand eighty? Um, it just says four thousand eighty.
Yeah, it uh, the previous for home would be thirty six hundred. Uh, and I'm not sure where the, the calculation, if it was based on the square footage, it should have been.
That's the old rate, I think.
Yeah.
This is supposed to be the old rate, this is what they got charged, it was a mistake, this is their new rate.
Alright.
Yeah, cause home has two hundred and forty.
They no longer use our internet.
I, I wondered whether we weren't to, um, the second year have the option to increase rates.
We don't really see. That sounds like a whole new lease. Yeah, I was gonna say. I mean, if we do it to your lease, shouldn't we just, they should know what they're gonna pay?
Well, that's what I mean, if, should we have something in here that, that we can?
I thought we renegotiate after two years, right?
Right.
After two years.
I don't, same for two years, that's.
Well, I'm asking whether we should have it, so that next year we can change it if we want to.
That would be of the council.
I guess I'm comfortable with having a two year lease at the going rate. I mean, I understand you're saying as things, costs could go up, it might be worth it to have an increase built in. I mean, we couldn't, I don't think we could just have them sign a lease that says we can increase, it would have to be a definite amount.
You'd have to come up with a moment, yeah.
Yeah, but I don't know, I feel like.
But this is like a two and a half year, right, because we're April twenty five, it goes through December twenty seventh.
Correct.
Why is that, or why isn't it just two years?
Maybe for uh, it should be, actually, I mean, it should be all twenty five and expire at the end of twenty six.
Because it says, on item three, it says twenty seven. So, we're. They'll run from the effective date through December thirty one, twenty twenty seven, is that what you wanted?
When does this lease kick in as a new lease?
It should be immediately, um, cause it was supposed to start at January first of twenty twenty five.
Uh, this is February first, is it February first the effective date? So would it be, you know, immediate or retroactive to February first?
It'd be retroactive, but I, I understood this to be a two year agreement.
Do you wanna look into that more?
Yeah.
Probably would.
So not do anything on it? Or do you wanna suspend it through twenty twenty six?
I, I would recommend um. I can, I can send it back, let's be dangerous.
Cause we haven't signed yet.
So we're going retro back to February first, not January first?
I, I was under the impression that it would be January first.
I could withdraw my motion.
Let's just, let's just hold.
Yeah, cause I, a- and I get it, things happen, believe me, so I would, can I just withdraw my motion?
Yeah.
Get the right dates and, yep, everything.
And at the same time, if you can at least provide us what I mean, so that we know when the other lease is coming up. That's the only other, that's the only other renter, right?
Um, no, we have uh state, state of Michigan.
Oh, yeah.
Department of Management Budget.
With Dursley.
Okay, next up, social district plan update. Ryan, you're on.
So we have uh Kingston Kitchen is here in town, right now they have a conditional liquor license. I wanted to, like, have the other businesses that we used approved. So right now, just approve them to be able to apply for a special district permit, once they get their full permit, they have to get that full, which is why, so they're gonna apply. So it might be a little time for them. When I reached out to Laura about that, they had some updates to our plan, they wanted us to name, so you'll note on the social district plan on the second page, some of the names, it was the DDA. Um, and the licensing names, we just had updated, so those are updated for the businesses that are in the social district. And then we did uh the map to include Kingston, the gin, and Village Gin instead of it saying Village Gin.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we um, that we permit Kingston Kitchen at the village to be part of the school, the social district permit. After ten o'clock.
Is that two motions for the social district plan and the, oh, you need something else too? Oh, yeah, I, I'll do both.
And I'll second both.
Do allow the Kingston Kitchen and also update the social. Do I have a motion in a second, is there any more discussion?
Yeah, I think that I ask this question every single time, um, and every single time you answer it, and I just cannot, I just can't handle the information. Um, why do we have to, every time somebody applies to join, why does it have to come back to council to have it?
That's the state.
Then you tell me that every meeting, there's no way for us to just delegate it? Okay.
Who is this Laura?
He knows. I'm fighting with their website right now, so.
I want, I wanted to get rid of it, but.
The thing of the social district is this weekend, so Friday, once the signs get put in, the businesses that have their social district permit right now, four that have their permit with the state is gonna go, so once TPW installs signs, you know, which they will install by Friday, those four businesses will be fixed, so. Then we have two other businesses that should have.
Um, I, I wondered if there was a title under C one on the second page. Uh, num- little number six. It's supposed to be entities?
It might be.
Yeah, Lowy Entities LLC doing this, this effort.
But the spelling of that, that's not entities. I, I don't know what that's.
I think the E and I are mixed up.
Oh, yeah, the E and I are mixed up, or whatever they say, I mean, so I'll make sure that it is.
And then I, I was confused on what in G, the last sentence. Can you explain what's that?
No, I believe it's during special events, so if there is, like, we'll say at Little Bear, that they have a special that micro license, that you wouldn't be able to have your social district permit in an area, it'd have to be um, alcohol, but nonsense for that liquor license. You can't bring a social district beverage into a special.
Right, right. Couldn't walk up from the driftwood, you thought it would be a Little Bear.
I get that, but does that mean they won't be able to walk through town at car show? They can walk in their district. Cause that's in district, but it's also a special event status.
We weren't running it during special.
I don't know. Oh, okay, maybe we're not, are we not running it during car show?
And then work to this one, not to us doing it. Part of a special land.
Yeah.
That would just be.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Glad the Kingston Kitchen, you update the social districts. Any more discussion? Please take the roll.
Member Iger?
Yes.
Mayor Lalone?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Member Pelter?
Yes.
Member Shepherd?
Yeah.
Also, member Will.
Yes, pass the seven to nothing. Next up, financials, April twenty twenty five.
Make a motion that we accept the financials that were presented to us.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? The financials?
I reprinted the first copy that you're actually not included just on that.
Thank you.
Uh, no other change.
Are are we doing?
Yeah, the next council meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other, any more discussion on the financials? I have a motion in a second. Got the financials. Please take the roll.
Airfucking Dufferson?
Yes.
Mayor Lalone?
Yes.
Councilmember Litzner?
Yes.
Councilmember Pelter?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Williford?
Yes.
Councilmember Iyer?
Yes.
Pass the seven to nothing. Consideration of the bills.
Make a motion that we accept and pay the bills as presented before us.
I'm sorry, go ahead. He can have it.
No, doesn't matter. Don't fight now, you guys. Yeah, a motion in a second. Any discussion? Please take the roll.
Mayor Lalone?
Yes.
Councilmember Litzner?
Yes.
Councilmember Pelter?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Williford?
Yes.
Councilmember Iyer?
Yes.
Yes. Hey, public comment, three-minute limit. Any, any subject?
One minute.
I just wanna say thanks for taking on all the stuff that you guys are taking on in such a short period of time. I know it's not easy. I just appreciate you. He's gotta put up the lot of stuff.
Public hearings used to start at six with regular council at seven.
Yes, and I'm sure I'm part of the problem there because I can't always be here at six, but sometimes we did stuff on other nights.
There were, I remember doing public hearings other nights in council.
Something, doing it.
Do you, Gus?
What's that?
Do you remember doing the public hearings different nights in council?
We did.
Huh?
We did. We did, we did it recently.
When I was, when I wasn't on, then.
Yeah, no, we did during our time.
Okay. City manager report.
Uh, just a uh update from the golf course. Currently, they have eighty-six memberships. Uh, twenty of those memberships are Moran Township, nine are St. Ignis Township, and fifty-seven are City. Also, uh, we received some reports from the Sioux Tribe two percent funding. Uh, we received seven thousand dollars for a new skate sharpening machine and for some fitness center equipment at the Little Bear. Uh, now that there is anything uh uh wrong with our current skate sharpening machine, but it it the what we have is isn't exactly user-friendly for the amount of turnover we have in the Sioux Skate Sharpening Machine. Anyone can use it. Um, so um, thank you to Sioux Tribe and Community Foundation donation seventeen hundred dollars for fitness center equipment as well. So thank you, Community Foundation. Um, also, we had a meeting on Friday uh with the townships in Mackinac County uh to discuss possible options for keeping the transfer station open. Um, we had some recommendations that came out of that meeting, and I'm working with uh G F L right now to get maybe additional proposals, and I'm also attending the Mackinac County meeting this Thursday to request funding to keep the transfer station open. Uh, reminder that we have the Port de Bod auction on June fifth. And I um I had mentioned in a email update to um city council a little bit about the the Senate Bill three oh four. And I just wanted to, uh, well, we have Jeremy here and Aaron in the audience, just just quickly. Um, I became aware of the Senate Bill three oh four on Thursday. Um, I was concerned since there was some language regulating ferries on our shores. Um, I I contacted Senator DeMoo's just for some clarification, just so that I can make sure and uh communicate um effectively to council on on the bill. Um, Senator DeMoo said he uh would, um, he was under the understanding that St. Ignis was in the know and supported the bill, and he said he'd put a freeze on it until we had more to scout discussion. Um, Friday, uh, we uh uh Mayor Lalone and Mackinac Island representatives and attorneys and our city attorney uh met briefly uh just to to get an update. Um, and uh Jeremy is online right now if anyone had any any questions.
Mackinac City was here also. City manager. Anybody got any? Anybody have questions for the attorney or for?
I didn't have enough time to digest it, but is it, is it in our best interest to support this bill?
I think we have to have a conversation. I just say, why, why wasn't this a conversation?
And I I my my suggestion may be to have a conversation, to sit down.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong here, but Mackinac Island was surprised too when it came.
This was a proposal from the council of Mackinac Island, so there were, you know, people who are interested in the city of Mackinac Island. Former legislators who um actually had conversation with legislators down there now who proposed this. Um, I do think that it is in everyone's best interest. You know, I I live here, own a business here. Um, we're not always gonna have more parking, but there are more components. The city of Mackinac Island is already a donation. For all of this, for the certification, upcoming of the regional ferry boat companies. So the the police legislation in Senate Bill three oh four is essentially asking for this certification. So uh the city of Mackinac Island has been regulating ferries since when we leave nineteen eighty-six, they were in litigation with the ferry boat companies between maybe seventy-five, I I it the mid to late seventies to the sometime in the eighties, they were going through litigation um to establish the authority to regulate ferry boat companies. We did very good services, so um obviously, we've never had to deal with the party issue because there really wasn't a parking issue to begin with. Um, so uh again, if anyone has any questions about this, this is clarification, not an expansion of the authority of the city of Mackinac Island. So if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer. Or contact.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thanks, Aaron. Committee reports. Do you have something or?
Um, yeah, uh, just a real brief, uh, the library met. And um, as you know, they're trying to renew their millage, so they'll be doing an informational factual only. They can't really um campaign for the millage, but they can put information factual out to the public. So that's gonna be coming.
Is that this year?
Yes.
It's in November, or November or August?
It's for the two townships.
Is it November or August?
August.
August.
Yes. Um, and they're very concerned with the the cuts for M L A, which is actually um involved in all of our, all of the Mel transfers from one library to another. That with the funding being cut, that's gonna be a big deep thing, and they're really concerned by how that's even gonna pan out, whether they'll be able to do it in their library loans anymore. And the other meeting I was at, um, I was at the Mackinac County Planning Commission meeting, and the main topics were the two housing developments that people are talking about, the one by the county and one by the tribe. And just a quick overview of that, the tribe, they have hired an engineer. So they are moving forward. They're looking at tiny homes and possibly other homes. And they're hoping them to only be for tribal employees, but they're still open for discussion on that. And they would be connecting to the city water and sewer. And they're still deciding whether they're gonna sell or rent these homes, whether they would um work with a company to own the the land and then rent them or sell them. And they would be getting an easement across the airport property, which has already been okay by the AV Aviation Department, and they're looking at possibly sixty units. And um they're moving forward. The county, um they are looking at twenty-four point two acres, and they're gonna be hiring a developer to put it all together, so they still, they they're not really moving up as fast as they want to because they haven't found their developer yet. They're looking at condominium and single-family and apartments and possibly selling the land to a land trust. And um looking at brownfield and TIF of money, and they're looking at phases of possibly sixty-nine units.
Thank you.
The the tribal development, the discussion involves the water and sewer, but is it different or is that actually in the township? The proposed?
I think it's in the city.
Yeah.
City, in the city.
So this isn't the Lawson property? Cuz didn't they buy the law?
This is farther down Boundary Road.
Boundary and.
Cuz didn't they buy the Lawson property too?
Oh, I don't know.
They bought both sides.
Yeah.
Of boundary.
Ah, gotcha. So the one side's in the city and the other side's in the township. Got it. Okay.
And they, and he had, um, Dean had met with with the different um groups that are working, and he had a big map, and I was surprised on how far did that area is. Wow.
What you're talking about, the county property, you're talking about across from some of his apartments where they'd enter, right? Okay, thanks. Councilmember comments?
Councilmember Pelter?
No comments, just thanks everybody for tonight.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Thank you, everybody for coming and and making your opinions and giving us your thoughts. Nothing's ever set in stone. We always like to hear. Hello, everyone. So thanks for coming. Thanks for everybody else.
Councilmember Litzner?
I wanna thank everybody for coming and even the ones who already left. Um, I I I'm gonna say as a council person, I'm a little frustrated that so much that got put in front of us. I understand there's multiple people working on things and everybody's busy, but a lot of what got put in front of us should have been able to been dealt with tonight and not postponed because of errors and missed things. So as a council person, I'm a little frustrated, so if if you're sitting out there and you're a little frustrated, I apologize. Um, I think we should have been able to move forward on a lot of this stuff if they didn't have mistakes. Um, I uh also would like to ask the city manager and the mayor, either one of them or possibly both of them to talk, Mackinac Island formed a transportation authority a couple of years ago, and I think we should have a seat on that board. And we've discussed it many times, but I really would like it to be a formal request, that we have a board seat or some kind of input on the transportation authority, cuz it does cover our shores, even though most of it is ferry stuff, which is definitely the Mackinac Islands. You know, their thing, but I I just, I think we need a seat on the, at the table. Um, and then maybe we wouldn't have been blindsided. Um, not that I don't agree with controlling things, but it would be just nice to be informed. Um, I also wanna thank, I wish he was here, our chief of police, and I can't say our patrolman's name.
Progast or something?
Yeah, that. And all the other law enforcement that came out today. My daughter was a um almost a victim of a carjacking at the hospital, and um they really took good care of her, all the staff at the Hampton Inn. Um, I just thank everybody. I mean, the, like I said, my two-year granddaughter was in the car. Um, so thank you to law enforcement.
Councilmember Iyer?
Um, thanks for everybody that came and and already left, but and also those people that are listening. Um, good to see that many people interested in what we're talking about. Um, I just have one question. Someone asked me, do we have, do we uh have an ordinance? Or can we um control trucks with their brakes?
Like Jake Brake, engine braking?
Do we have something that?
I, not that I'm aware of. Noise ordinance.
Yeah.
There's something. Noise ordinance.
Noise ordinance.
Prior to seven A M.
Yeah. Now, somebody was, they were complaining to me about how we're not regulating or. I didn't know, and they had to come and complain. That's it.
Councilmember Williford?
Um, I appreciate everybody that was that had their, their input and their feedback, and I am reachable in case there's additional feedback after this meeting, cuz uh, you know, um, I wanna get it right in regards to employee housing, short-term rentals, and everything else that we addressed here. And the more input I get, maybe the better decisions that I can make about a situation. Um, my uh, my concerns are with you too. I I I showed up.
Thanks for being there.
That was um, that was an interesting scenario there. I never expected that up here, you know, I come from a bigger city, that's just another Tuesday, but that was pretty graphic to to roll up on in in our little safe town here, so um the cops were nothing but the police officers were nothing, I'm not supposed to say cops.
Or like meter maid.
Meter maid, you know what I'm saying? Police officers were very professional. I was impressed with our our new officer. He was um, he was very considerate and kind, and and the chief, of course, did what he did, and there was a lot of supporting staff, there was state and I believe county here, and.
There was a whole lot of cars.
There was a lot of, yeah, and so seeing them organize, get things together, that was very impressive. In regards to the Bill three oh four, um I'm I'm kind of, I know that this has always been that way with Mackinac Island, and I've asked several times about the transit authority. If they don't wanna talk with us, that's fine, but I'm not in any ways gonna go any further than look out for the best interest of St. Ignis at this point in time. That's because of the the communication at this point in time. I know that they're an integral part of our community, but sometimes communication makes a person at least feel like they're not, you know, a wet tissue, and I hereby wanna be involved with these conversations. You don't have to talk about the rest of the council, cuz they might have their own opinions, but if they're gonna continue to not have conversations that will benefit both of us and we hear it a different way, or some special politician has stepped up and did something. It's gonna have us feeling the same way we do, so I I'd prefer to have not conversations. That's it.
Mayor Bojum Gusterson?
Um, I think it was valuable to hear the comments of the public and the various different aspects cuz we had um a pretty wide range of thoughts that occurred during the public hearings. The one thing that I would uh caution the council on um is that it is my understanding that when we're holding a public hearing, we're to hear the public. We're, it's not a Q and A. It's, and I know that in a small town, that makes that difficult. But we listen to the public, and if it's hard for anyone to keep their mouth shut, it's me, I promise you. But during the public hearing, I'm, all all I'm doing is taking notes. Our our discussion, if I understand this right, is when we get to the agenda. And 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 I understand that there's times where the public is asking a question, and it seems it seems almost rude and uncourteous, you may say, to not try and respond. But that's, a public hearing is designed to allow the public to express their opinions. And and I thought we had a pretty good balance of that, but it really isn't a Q and A. That's my my thought, because you could have public hearings that could go on ad infinitum if you don't follow those kind of procedures in the future. That's all. That's all I have to say. That's all I have to say.
It's not a Q and A, but then I have to comment on that.
It's not time.
Mayor Lallone?
I wanna thank everyone for coming out tonight and speaking, we appreciate it, that's amazing. City government work. Staff, thank you again for all your hard work. Also, I didn't mention it at the beginning of the, uh, meeting, but I'd like to offer my condolences to the Casper family from Cedarville, Mike Casper was longtime emergency management coordinator here for Mackinac County, and he helped us tremendously through the ice storm, we spent a lot of hours down at Little Bear each with him, so. He, uh, he was pretty instrumental in helping us, yes, the National Guard here and that, so. My condolences to his family, and again, thank everyone for coming out tonight. Alright, I need a motion.
So moved.
Motion second, do you, John?
Uh, second.
Follows in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, during this meeting at ten twenty-eight.